Okay. Let's call the March 28th regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
For real.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So my suggestion for today is for us to first go back and revisit the TPZ, the potential development within the TPZ, the timber zone, and make some decisions on that, and that way we'll have cleared that item because we all, I think, got the comments from Julie and from the Planning Coalition.
The problem is that I haven't read all those comments, so I'm not prepared to do that. I thought we were going to be just charging through the...
Well, that was the last thing that was left from our previous discussion, so I was just trying to get it cleared so we can...
Sorry about that.
I'm prepared to have a discussion on it, but maybe we can come back to it after a week or something. It's not very long, this stuff.
If I can find the materials.
Okay. Okay. So let's... The next thing was to go to page 128, start working through there, taking care of any sections that we believe were prepared to, any places that we need additional information or that any of the commissioners feel like they need time to think about it further, we'll just skip right over, other than having a very brief discussion so we get the overall direction that everybody is thinking, in case we need anything more from Julie on that. And then to go right to the definition section and start blowing through that if we can, and that's a very hopeful... She's laughing, I know everyone's laughing, but I'm hopeful that we can start moving through that pretty quickly. Our goal is to have only a couple of meetings in April to hopefully wrap this up so that they can get back to us with the final draft. And that final draft, the goal would be to, if we feel like we need to see it once, one day, no more time than that into it, just to reassure ourselves that everything is in there and that we're really ready for this to go to the board. So that will not be another opportunity to rehash thoughts on things, that will be an opportunity just to check that everything is there as we expected it. Because otherwise, I think that we could be at this forever perfecting, you know? But that's... Is everybody's okay with that? Let's go ahead and... I think everyone's on 128 and ready to go. Is anybody online in it?
Yes.
Okay. So to anybody who may be online, you're welcome to weigh in as we work through the sections.
Are we doing general public comment? It's a regular meeting day.
Oh, it's a regular meeting day. But we haven't only agendized as information.
Right, but there'd be a public... Because it's a regular meeting day, there'd be general public.
The thing is not really agenda. If there isn't any... Well, let's ask. Is the person online interested in making general public comments?
I just want... Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted... I wasn't able to speak, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm unable to chime in when it's time.
On each section, you can speak up and say, just like you've been doing all along.
Well, yeah. We're in another mode now, though. We're in the raise hand and be recognized mode, so...
So we can't see any of that, Tom. We don't...
Yeah. So if anybody wants to add me to the way we were before as a panelist, that's fine too, but I won't have a comment until page 131, so go ahead.
Okay. So I'm not... If this is... I'm not sure if this is something we can control. I think this might be at Annette's end.
Yes.
I've been promoting him to panelist, but he can still raise his hand and speak when he wants to, instead of just chiming in anytime. What would the commission prefer?
Well, let us have our initial discussion and then let hit on each section as we go through. Well, I'll try to remember to say, ask him if there's anything.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we don't have general public comment for anything, not on the agenda, I take it?
There is nobody here to provide general public.
Or online, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll open the general public comment period right now for anything not on the agenda today, but if interest to the Planning Commission, no action to be taken on any item brought up today anyway. There's nobody in the audience and nobody online, so we will close the general public comment portion of the agenda. And I don't believe we have any staff announcements or agenda changes, no consent agenda items, no regular agenda items, so we will move on to our informational item. Who wants to start?
Well, I was giving you a chance.
No.
Okay, the bottom, bottom of page 128.
Oh, we're not starting with the TPZ? Tim is not ready to discuss. Oh, he's not ready to discuss that?
I've been spending all my time getting ready for this, and I didn't know when we were going to do those various special segments.
No problem, let me flip back. Okay.
Okay. Bottom of page 128.
128.
The last sentence down there, "Any accessory dwelling unit constructed pursuant to this section will not cause..." I think we need a violation of the allowable density to be exceeded. Oh, I'm sorry. To be exceeded takes care of that. Forget my a violation.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, the way it is. It's hard to read the red between the underlining and the strikeouts sometimes.
All right.
We think there's a missing word when there's not.
Right. And I just want to mention on 129, it's... I really appreciate the fact that there's a... In red there, there's a citation to the definition of junior accessory dwelling unit. I think that's what we need to do throughout this. That's it.
So I have a question. It's probably... I didn't have time to look this up myself, but I'm sure Martha actually knows the answer to it. On page 129, D floor area, it says, "Attached accessory dwelling units..." The total floor area of an accessory dwelling unit that's attached to the primary dwelling unit shall not exceed 50% of the living area of the primary dwelling unit. Is that actually a state requirement? Because I don't see why we would force people to have a larger primary unit than they want. So perhaps they only want a 1,200 foot ADU and a 1,500 square foot primary? And that... Or that's all that will fit on their property?
Right. I don't believe that's the state when I'm looking at your current ones right now, so just give me a minute to look.
I just know that I've done things that were essentially duplexes with two smaller units. But they just keep adding these sections at the state level.
Right, and I think just the reasoning behind that would be to have it like truly accessory to a primary, whereas if you did, you know, something equal, that could be more under the SB9 allowances for kind of two primaries.
But we don't allow that here, and I think because of the wildland urban interface, we are exempted from allowing some of those things that are allowed in more urban areas.
Right, so this is your existing standards for accessory dwelling units? But you could... It's up to your commission if you want to kind of amend that.
I thought it was part of our old holdover where we said that in... Before ADUs were widely required, that we said they had to be clearly subservient to the primary. So I think it's probably left over for now. I would strike it myself. I don't see any reason to require that.
Are we confident... Martha, are you confident that state law doesn't have anything to do with this section? Or does that need research?
Double hundred square feet.
Well, definitely double, you know, double check and verify, but I think if the commission states, you know, you know, if possible, here's what we would like, you know, we can make sure it either matches up or give as much as... As close to that as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then if we're going to do away with that limitation, what about the limitation under 1A, the detached maximum 1,200?
That is a state requirement.
That's state.
Right? Yes.
That I'd have to verify. I actually believe that's a minimum allowance. I have to go back and check all of those numbers.
Yeah. But... Yeah, it's a maximum, but under the attached, the reference to the 50%, I'm not clear. I don't... I don't recall reading that, so I don't think... I don't think it's in the new state regs, but yeah, we can go back and verify. So is the consensus that if it's not part of state law, then we want to strike it?
Would it still be the maximum of 1,200 square feet?
Yes. Yes. That is part of state law.
Okay. Yeah, that's... I'm part of your consensus.
So we would have... B would say an attached with the ADU would still have a maximum of 1,200 square feet. Okay. Anything else that you have there?
Nope.
Anybody else? Okay, next page. So I have a question. If we look at F conversions, item two says that when you convert a garage or carport to an ADU, that replacement parking is not required, but then when you look at G, it says that the required parking for the primary dwelling shall be provided. So I'm thinking that enclosed parking doesn't need to be replaced, but they still have to have the two parking spaces on a residential parcel. That seemed a little unclear.
I'm going to check that again. I do believe the replacement parking is not required. It is kind of straight from state law, so I don't even know if you can require, you know, to be replaced uncovered, but we can verify that and then just clarify how those two fit together.
So I believe that it would be problematic in our area to not have required parking. It would be a problem, especially in areas with snow removal where parking on the street is just a no-go on our narrow roads. So to say that... I can see that no additional parking is required for the ADU, I know that, but it seems like the parking for the primary residence has to remain in order for us to have safe access on our rural roads. And even in our historic districts where the streets are really narrow and there's no really availability of on-street parking.
I concur.
Can this be enough when we look into and do the best we can?
Sure.
Right. Also, if you have covered parking, you would have a driveway in front of it. So likely that's where then...
So not always.
Even though that doesn't count.
Not always here. We sometimes have garages that are literally five feet from the street. But yes, I think that's what the idea here was in the way it was written.
Right.
So just, yeah, if we can clarify and try to maintain the requirement for a couple of onsite parking spaces. Okay. So now we moved from my bailiwick to Tim's bailiwick as a fire volunteer. It's like maybe... Oh, no, that later.
Better. I'm on 132?
Yeah.
One easy part is under permit review, the new language, it does down to the second to last line, talk about a delay in the city processing, so that...
We talked about that previously. I asked if Gina could do a search and replace anywhere that it says city with county.
Needs to be done there.
Only a couple of spots that I found, but I might have missed some.
Then the other thing I have, I'll wait till Gina's. Public comment?
Oh, let's let Tim finish his thought and then...
In that, in that underlying new language, I don't quite understand, let's see, the sentence is, "A building permit application for an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel within existing or proposed single-family, multifamily dwelling shall be approved or denied within 60 days of the building permit application being complete." Does that mean designated, yes, it's complete, or being completed and filed?
Approved, you mean?
No. You know, if I write an application and complete it in the privacy of my own home, it's complete, but it isn't filed.
It's accepted. It means that the building official has accepted it.
Well, that's what I was wondering. That's what I think needs to be...
Martha, you were going to clarify something?
Well, yeah, not... I mean, that's like saying my bills are complete because I signed my check at home, you know, like, but didn't submit it to the IRS for my... Like, my taxes aren't complete until like they're filed.
I understand, but I think we need...
Just put Dean in there, everybody will be happy.
That's fine.
Okay. Tom, anyone again?
Back on page 131, determination of adequacy of water source capacity. Item two, there's a source capacity test in A and a source capacity test in B, and I think that's very good. The only thing I would recommend is adding item C under two. It says something like, "The owner certifies that there has been no well capacity failures on the property in the past five years." And maybe even the property and the neighboring properties. Because as we all know, the classic, you know, water source capacity test is done in the springtime and it always passes, but the question is, will there be water in August? And if we know there's not going to be water in August, because it hasn't been water in August for the last five years, we probably shouldn't be allowing an accessory dwelling unit. So that's the thought, would do what you will with it.
That wouldn't take into account somebody who's deepened their well in last year, but had, because they had a failure the year before, can't we just put in the source capacity tests need to be done in August or July or whatever?
Because you have 60 days in which to approve their permit.
I also, I just want to know whether this interfaces with the well ordinance or, you know, environmental management, you know? I don't know. I don't know if she looked at any of this, quite honestly, to make sure that there's nothing that, that conflicts with what we have on the books.
I think this is the current requirement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It looks, yeah, it looks very standard. So maybe we can, could just ask Lisa to review it or whoever's reviewing this for them these days and see if they're, feel that there's any additional language necessary.
This is one of those situations where I think just because it's always been the way we have done it in the past, given climate change and the situation with the weather, maybe we shouldn't just do it the way we always have in the past.
That's why we're asking them to review it again. Thank you. In response to your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Is... Is there anything else in the ADU section that anyone wants to bring up? Okay. Agricultural homes, stays and dude ranches.
Fine there.
I had a question about F under there, the food service. That wording is really awkward and I'm not sure... I am quite clear that what you're trying to say is that they can only serve food to people staying on the, doing the homestay or the dude ranch.
Right.
But when you read that sentence, it talks about timing and it's very, very awkward. We could just rewrite it more simply, I think that would take care of my concerns.
Do we need the language and serve meals at any time?
Yeah.
Get feedbacks.
And I have a question. So if somebody has a dude ranch or do agritourism, they can't serve any... I'm just throwing this out there because I've had a pumpkin... I've had a pumpkin patch in the past and we've served food during our pumpkin patch.
Do you think it was a special event? It's just you would need another permit. It wouldn't be allowed outright under this section.
I know there's people that do that.
Yeah. Gina, is that correct? They would just need a separate permit if they were also doing special events on the same parcel as a dude ranch existed.
Yeah, so if the special events are not permitted outright for some reason, then they would need a special events permit for anything that's classified as a special event, not otherwise enumerated as permitted.
Oh, it's not telling you you can't do that here. It's just saying as part of...
No, I think the intent is to prevent someone from running a restaurant in their... At their place of...
I have suggested rewrite if you want. The agricultural home stays and dude ranches still serve food only to their registered guests to the extent to which the price of food is included in the price of the overnight transit occupancy.
That's what I thought too.
I'd agree.
I just wanted to make sure that the timing of meals wasn't somehow...
Yeah.
Any... Nobody else has anything in that section?
No.
Right. Okay. Animal keeping. We've all had a chance to...
No, I've looked. I really think we need to have advanced notice when we're going to be considering the things that we're going to go back to, because I've been spending all my time getting up to date.
This is the next item on our list.
Well, I know. But I thought we were going to have some notice that, okay, this, today we're going to discuss animal keeping.
We knew what the next section was. Are you not prepared to talk about any of the animal keepings?
Well, I have all my notes that I haven't been... I was under the...
Why did you...
Oh, I know. No, I understand. I thought we were going to get notice of when we were going to discuss these things we were coming back to.
Then let's put animal keeping on our area to skip for today and come back to at our next meeting, we're going to clear every single thing that has been, okay?
Okay. That's great.
So so far that means TPZ and animal keeping. Okay? And animal production. We believe we might need some additional input from the ag community. From the ag community? Yes, because it talks about how many head of cattle you can have in different areas and if that is not in Title VI.
I think, and I'd like to have a short discussion on animal production, what we need from the...
Yeah, give me some ideas about what the concerns are, please.
Why 16,500 turkeys, but only 9,000 chickens?
That's brought forward in current code, so we had those...
Excuse me, Jesse Fowler is online. She would like to...
Okay. So...
What I would like is for us to refer this to Jesse Fowler, our ag commissioner, so she can get input. It seems to me on animal production, we're talking about RA zones having the same number of cattle as generally as A1 zone. It would seem to me to be better to have a per acre situation, and I would like to get, I mean, perhaps the ag commissioner is ready to give us the input, but I was uncomfortable doing anything about this until we had input from the ag community.
Okay, so let me just give you some history. So those references, now this is not the animal keeping section, this is... These are the standards that specifically apply to our resource zones, right? So under animal production, those figures were carried forward through the, from the previous code, and that was all done by a committee of agriculturalists throughout the entire county, including the ag commissioner at the time and the planning department, and that all reflects in that, in that code rewrite that we did back in, I think it was 2008. So that wasn't just pulled out of midair from, you know, from myself and/or Martha, so that, those numbers were carried forward. Now, not to say that they don't need to be modified, but there was a significant number of people from the agricultural community that sat on that committee, and they're the ones that came up with that language.
Did that include RA zones?
Yeah, so that... It actually included RR, yes. It included RA and RR.
Small-scale, personal-sized farming lot seems...
Well...
Very excessive.
And what I'm saying is that that portion was carried forward. Martha and I determined that there had to be a difference. We had to somehow differentiate between residential agriculture, which is a resource zone, and rural residential, which is a residential zone, so we more or less took RR out of those resource zones and the allowance for all of those agricultural uses in respect to animals, and that's why we lumped RR down under animal keeping, but with, you know, with the thought of not making any significant changes, we decided to keep RA in that whole mix, so if you don't think it's appropriate, then we can have that discussion.
So let's stop for just one minute. Let me ask all the commissioners. I feel strongly RA needs to be pulled out of here and dealt with separately. How do you guys feel about that? RA could be a small...
R A could be as small as a five acre parcel.
Sure. And to be honest with you, so can A one. I've actually seen A one parcels as small as one acre.
So I think the size
Yeah.
to be dealt with in some way.
Well, it seems to me if we do animals.
And I run talent, I agree.
Yeah, if we do animals per acre, wouldn't it make more sense?
I think it, that's more complicated than that, but I think.
If we have Commissioner Fowler on, that's.
Yeah.
It's here.
Let's hear what your thoughts are.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect, uh, yeah, what I was actually gonna say is that I'm, Gina has talked to me a little bit about um, these updates and uh, yeah, I'm happy to help however, I don't have any numbers for you off the, the top of my head, but I'm happy to reach out to the community if that's what you'd like, the ag community to figure this out, but um, so then you just said, yeah, I agree that you should probably put in there something about acreage limitations. But actually, the reason why I raised my hand was something you already went past, which is where you changed uh, hens to fatter. And I just wanted to, to make you aware on that, that would have, then the way I read it aloud, uh, guinea fowl and also peacocks, which are really quite loud. So I was assuming that's why you wanna get rid of roosters, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, they are. Uh, I would like to just ask that Jesse Gordon needs something and comes back to us with recommendations or maybe works with you on it. To make sure that these get updated to whatever they feel is appropriate.
Okay, I caution you that that is gonna take a significant amount of time.
Ms. Fowler, how long do you think that could, might take?
You have to understand who the ag community is and how many people are involved and how, what differentiating opinions we will have.
Yeah, I agree in that it kinda matters exactly how much information, I mean, I could just going to like say the, the Farm Bureau meeting, the monthly meeting, ask them and get their opinion on things, but I mean, again, I don't know if you wanna have like town share situations, that would obviously extend this quite a bit. So it just matters how much information you'd like to be brought back.
I think even if we could add language on there that says that these are the maximums and that it could be limited by resource availability on any particular, by the size of the parcel and resource availability, like depending on what quality of pasture there is, how much water is available, all those things.
But how would you do that for a ministerial permit? There would have to either be a formula or conditional approval.
Somebody doesn't come and get a permit to do production on their parcel, they just get to do it.
Great. And that's what, that's the point she's trying to make. You can't just say, you need to put, you, if you want there to be limits, there has to be a way to calculate for. So if we don't want them to have to have permission.
Well.
It shouldn't be discretionary, right, where they pick.
I think that it, we would end up treating it in the same way we treat everything else that is allowed by right. As unless there's a complaint, nothing's gonna happen and the neighbors are gonna be complaining if animals are starving on, or causing a problem for them.
If there's three thousand hogs allowed by right, what are you gonna be able to do about it if there's a complaint?
That's what I'm saying is that these are maximums and that it that the actual amount allowable would be limited by the specifics of that property and the availability of the resources to support them, that that's how we could do it in the short term. And then you can take as much time as you need to actually look through these numbers and make adjustments to that. I mean, we have to get the zoning code done, so it can't, we can't have a six month process, right?
If, if Commissioner Fowler, if we could, I don't know when your next Farm Bureau meeting is.
Um, it is coming up here in the next couple of weeks. As I was saying, I could also reach out to uh, the, the farm advisors, U C C E, and see if they have something that is um, literature that maybe says uh, the, what they recommend for different dairy hog, poultry, all that. And then, yeah, you can maybe just put an extra sentence on there that has actual acreage amounts to, that goes with that maximum number. And then I could just basically go by the um, the Farm Bureau and then reach out also to my cabinets and say, hey, does this look okay to you? So it's kind of more like a yes or no versus an input situation, if that works for you.
But basically, you know, it's unfair to you that we're hitting you with this when we need to wrap this up in the next few weeks. It is, if you could come back with some recommendation within the next three weeks. It would be extremely helpful to us.
I'll offer something just, just for context. Just, I wanna keep in mind that this is your zoning code and that oftentimes zoning codes don't have limits on, on animal production. Um, and those are really, um, whether animals have enough space or they're being fed or um, odor and nuisance control is happening is really often under other um, regulations. So what this is saying is like animal production is allowed in these zones. And it's only, and this is something, as Gina said, happened through a previous effort. They said, but when you get to this amount, we do want some discretionary review around it. And that's where those kind of numbers came in. So I think maybe that's one thing that the ag commissioner and the Farm Bureau and whoever looks at this might consider is that does the zoning code need a straight limit on animals or is that really addressed through other, you know, kind of things that happen in the world of agriculture and um, animal control and so on. So just another point, this is again, just the zoning code, there are other, are other rules and regulations and things that agriculture operates under.
So doing well, if in fact, there are other regulations that deal with this specifically?
And we could just refer to those.
Cause that's the case.
I, I don't know if right to farm would have any impact on this.
That's pre-existing. Isn't there right to farm for pre-existing farms?
Okay, so that, that would just be my only thought, cause I know that we have received complaints in the past for people who do have smaller acreage and they have lots of um, animal production on it.
Yes.
Right.
Three thousand hogs on a five acre parcel would make the neighborhood uninhabitable, probably.
It would be inhabited, but it'd be inhabited.
You're no humans.
I, so I think what we're asking for is any direction you provide, we'll come back to it with that information and modify it at that point. Our two biggest concerns are whether R A belongs in this section and then how we can maybe we don't need to provide exact numbers and we can just say what is you know, reasonable carrying capacity of parcel and without
But we, we would.
beating the neighbors, you know, enjoying their property, blah, 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 safe for the animals.
Yeah, I, I'll definitely, um, my thought is that we have a new livestock advisor who's actually been around quite a while, is quite good. And reaching out to them and seeing if there's some sort of literature that maybe into the actual numbers, you can say you know, this literature is maximum allowable, something like that, would might be an easier way to go about it.
Sounds great.
I don't. Good luck, I've already, I've already talked to him about the animal keeping section.
Anyhow, whatever, whatever you can provide, Commissioner Fowler, we would very much appreciate.
I just, yeah.
What, what's up Gina?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I, no.
Yes.
Okay, and no disrespect, okay, but we are in the last leg of this, um, this process. Um, we are an agricultural community. It is, it is restated over and over and over throughout the general plan that this is encouraged. This section of code was written by our local agricultural community. I'm not saying that it doesn't need revision at some point. I'm just saying that I do not, I am not in favor of us delaying this process for this particular matter. There's, there's far more important things to be dealing with at this point.
I, I, we agree, we're just waiting if we could get in the next couple of weeks.
And when we're talking about removing R A, we really need to start thinking about, okay, what is R A versus what is R R? And we don't want them to mirror each other, they're clearly two different sound different.
Not suggesting that, I'm suggesting that R A needs to be acknowledged as smaller parcels and that these maximums might not be appropriate.
And they might not, but you have to also realize that, you know, um, site-specific conditions will also dictate the size of a, an operation.
Asking for a language that talks about available area. Because a larger parcel might be able to have more than this easily.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And that, you know, I, I don't wanna have somebody who has an R A lot, all of a sudden have too many animals on it, or, or any other, other these, if they're, if they're small lot, have too many animals on it, have neighbor complaints and have the person say, well, look, I am allowed, I'm permitted this many animals on that property. I'm looking forward to.
I think we beat it up enough.
Yes, I think so.
I think we understand the challenges that Gina's dealing with and we wanna move forward as fast as possible. And if that means just coming up with some generic language that covers the concerns until some later date, we'll at least have as much in as we had before.
Yeah.
So. Uh, Tom, is there anything you wanna add to that discussion?
Right, um, I wanna get back to the, the, the original intent here is to figure out when someone needs an administrative use permit. Right? And uh, I think in the R A situation on a, or small parcel situation, you're gonna reach nuisance levels, you know, way below these maximums, right? If you're on five acres, as someone said about the, the, I think the, the part about the, the hogs on the five acre lot was, was perfect. So it may be that the other provisions in the code that deal with nuisances and complaint-based system, as Michelle was saying, would work in the R A, whereas in all the other zones, what you have here will be just fine.
Right.
So it may be a both and, you may be okay just as it is.
I don't know the extent to which a nuisance can automatically be declared if somebody is doing what they're allowed to do by rate.
I think what he's suggesting is maybe an A U P should be required on the R A or it should have
Or based on acreage.
But I think like Jesse said, maybe looking at the acreage as a limiter on some of this, like maybe if the parcel is less than ten acres or less than five acres, you need an A U P always. But I think we have ideas.
I'd like to reassure Commissioner Fowler, we're open to her suggestions.
Right.
That she, she doesn't have to uh, match any of our particular comments, but just note our concerns.
No, like I said, I'll, I'll get you some information, um, I'll give you an information I have. I know you guys are on a time crunch and that there, it sounds like there has been quite a bit of time already put into this. Uh, and then you guys can take that information, if I can even find any, it sounds like Gina's saying there might not be any. Uh, and then kind of make a decision from there, but yes, I, I do agree that it would probably be good to put some sort of limitation on, on acreage, just because you do have people who, you know, whatever their intent may be, for better or for worse, will probably put whatever the maximum is on the minimum amount of acreage.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your being there and willing to cooperate on a quick basis.
And we're by no means trying to limit what people can do on their, I mean, unnecessarily burden the agricultural community by limiting.
So we're just talking about R A?
No, we're, we're talking in general, what's the best way to
Do this.
to present this. So, but R A is the biggest concern right now.
But Jesse, does the word fowl not capture all birds?
It does.
Well, I don't think so, but she says. Sure, and that's why I was saying, just being aware that there are some very loud species like guinea fowls and peacocks that people might not want next door.
And yet, when we, the current version, when it gets down there, it, it, it limits, the limitations are in terms of ducks laying hens or broilers, which I assume would be chickens. So anyhow, it's, it's something we need to.
Well, I think she's, I think she's referring to um, the changes that were made under animal keeping.
No, on animal production.
Yeah, it was higher.
Poultry comma fowl.
Over, I see, we're back over on one thirty-three, okay.
So lots of people raise
Okay.
specimen birds, more exotic birds.
Right.
And so, but we don't have a limit on there, so perhaps if there's no limit.
Yeah.
Then it requires an A U P. We, we just need to deal with that, if you're, if you're suggesting something outside of this and it's not similar enough, then maybe it needs a, a limit for done under the A U P. Anyway, I think we'll have to come back to it. So camping on private property.
Okay, now, property owner is allowed to camp on their private property. Um, what are the, let's see. I'm, I'm O A O A. It seems to me that.
I think.
Doesn't it become like a campground if you're breaking that?
That's what we want to prevent. Well, no, I, I think what Tim is suggesting is if somebody is renting the whole, the property, can just that one renter then camp, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
But I, and I had a question, is this really all zones, all parcels, all sizes? So really in an R one neighborhood with less than quarter acre parcels, are we saying that it's okay to?
Yeah, this, this is carried forward, so.
Yeah.
If you, if you think it needs further restriction, then.
I think most H O As restrict it.
Yeah, has it been an issue in the past?
Yeah, is this something?
Um, not, no, not really. Um, you know, I think there's that rare occasion where you might have a situation that's causing problems, but generally speaking, I don't, it, it, I don't believe it's an issue. What becomes an issue is when people are um, exceeding this limitation.
They're camping three hundred and sixty-five acres a year.
They're literally living in their R V on the property without appropriate sewage disposal and et cetera.
So I, 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 I don't, I don't have a problem with continuing it the way it is, just with the question of if somebody is leasing the entire property. Wouldn't that person also have the right to do?
I think that's an awkward slope toward.
Okay, if, then, then I would say.
Somebody having an empty piece of parcel going, I can make a little money by renting this to somebody and letting him camp.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think if, if, if it's been working fine in the past, let's just keep it the way it is.
Okay, campground.
I have a question, is all?
All, all properties, all zones?
So uh, and I know this is a possibility uh, in another county that I'm happy to be related to someone who's doing this. Um, where they, for example, have a vineyard and they wanna put a um, a mobile home, not a home, an R V and then rent it out and then have folks come over and go wine taste.
The campground host.
Yeah, and, and it's like a, like a um, not an Airbnb, but on that type of platform. Would that apply to this?
No.
No.
Okay.
It's a whole different operation, it is.
Yeah, there it is.
You, we define that.
Then I have a question, what's the, the green print? I don't understand what, what the significance of green is. This next camping on private property crossed out.
Got it added in and taken back.
Yeah, I think it's just that's, I think that's um, um, how the numbers have tracked changes as they kinda overlay with each other.
They, they just, the computer made us do it.
Yeah, I, I believe, I don't, yeah, I don't, Mar- Martha's not making those colors.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, the computer is making those colors.
I didn't know if I was supposed to get, oh, it's in green.
Yeah, it's green, pay close attention to everything in green. Yeah, it's green, pay close attention to everything in green.
Okay, thank you. Then, uh, the next, in the next section, uh, under A two,
Are we on campgrounds and RV parks?
Yeah. In A two, all campgrounds and RV parks serving recreation vehicles shall have a sewage septic receptacle for vehicle tanks of a size and design, I don't, I don't understand what we're saying there about vehicle tanks of a size and design meeting the requirement. I mean, if, if they have a receptacle, why are we talking about vehicle tanks?
If they're talking about the size of the tank that you're emptying into.
Yes.
Your septic system itself.
Okay, well, then, then why don't we just say, have a sewage septic receptacle of a, of a size.
It's for the vehicle to.
For a vehicle tank.
Yeah, okay.
Empty, maybe we should say emptying of vehicle.
It's a dump station.
Right, it's a dump station.
It's, okay.
So could we just say emptying of vehicle tanks? Then it's clear.
Except that this, of a size and design, I have a, I mean, that obviously then is supposed to uh, modify the receptacle.
Right.
So.
So maybe we should have a sewage receptacle, receptacle of a size and design meeting for the emptying of blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, or receptacle, comma, for vehicle tanks, comma, of a size and design meeting the requirement. Do it?
No.
Okay.
But it's not the receptacle for the vehicle tanks, it's to empty the vehicle tanks into.
Right.
Okay, your, your language is.
Let's leave, let's leave the exact language to you and Martha, you understand the issue. I, do you have, I have one more thing in that section.
Well, I, I also, in that same subsection, if, if you have a sewage, I guess a sewage receptacle is just something that collects it and then dumps it in the sewer, is that? We're talking about?
Well, it depends, not necessarily.
Or a leach field.
Yeah, could be a leach field.
But no, no, I mean.
Could be its own system.
Sewer.
Right.
Don't these.
It may not be hooked up to a public sewer. It may be contained, it may be contained on site in its own system.
Right.
Well, that's septic, right?
That's why sewage.
Sewage slash septic.
Anyhow, you need, and, and, let's put it this way, if you are hooked up to a sewer, you still need a receptacle.
I don't know, that's up to the design of the engineer.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think there's anything that goes necessar- it, it might have to go into a tank before it's pumped into the system, into the public system, I don't know, I don't know how it works, but environmental management does.
Yes.
So we'll leave it up to them.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Them and the sewer district.
Okay.
I have one more, and it's just the, the, right below there, three. It says, all campgrounds and RV parks shall be served by A flush type toilet. Why do we say A? Like only one toilet? Or could it say by flush type toilet parentheses S, so whatever?
Okay.
Yes.
I don't care if it's one or five, it depends on the design of their facility. Anybody else, anything in there?
Public comment?
Yes.
I, I like the fact that at the bottom here, we have three, uh, uh, provisions that deal with safety, um, the, the campground and RV parks shall meet the requirements of the responsible fire protection agency. Um, and that will work well where the agency is willing to make comments on the project. Um, that's not always the case. Um, they're not always available for that. But the other part here, all campgrounds and RV parks shall be served by access routes capable of safe and adequate capacity and surface material to handle the projected peak traffic load. If we could add something along the lines of, as well as emergency access and evacuation, I think we'd have the right sense there. Because the, the, the peak traffic load is one thing, what, you know, people trying to get in, people, uh, uh, you know, at four o'clock in the afternoon, but trying to get out while fire engines are passing is what's critical. So there need to be pullouts and stuff on the road. So if we could just add, as well as emergency access and, uh, evacuation, I think we got it.
So I think they're subject to those, uh, requirements anyway.
Ready.
But I don't, I wouldn't mind having a reference to it. I mean, all development has to comply with the two ninety-two, and highways and access roads.
The building department's gonna get them in the end.
Good thing.
I said the building department will have to sign off on it and they'll actually.
And there is quite.
I mean, we do have a county fire marshal now, and they do inspections on everything.
We can get that reference though, and just put it in and say that, and if you would like, we can say that it will be reviewed by the building department or public works, and/or public works. Forced. Anything else on that item? I think actually it's probably a good comment, because I think sometimes people think these more rural settings are somehow exempt from those requirements.
That's scary.
So do you want me to, um, add that to five, or do you wanna make it, uh,
I just made it.
Seven?
Seven. Emergency access. Access and evacuation.
Okay.
Community gardens, are there any comments?
Yeah, uh, number one, I think, right, at the start, you say community gardens, we ought to have in parentheses, C-section seventeen point four two, point oh two zero. And then referring to that, it's on page two thirty-two. That, community garden is described as use of land by several individuals or households, for and limited to the cultivation of herbs, fruits, flowers or vegetables, including the cultivation and tillage of soil and the production, cultivation, growing and harvesting of any agricultural, floricultural, or agricultural commodity. And then this classification includes, excludes the cultivation of cannabis, any other controlled substance. I don't, I, it seems to me that that, and then this sentence back on page one thirty-six, it says residential accessory gardens cultivated or intended to in whole or in part by neighboring residents or property owners are not considered community gardens, and I, I, I don't, I, I don't see how those two statements, uh, are consistent.
Well, I think when we get to the definitions, we should definitely look at that and see if we can make sure that they're consistent. I think that this in red, responding to our previous comments, when two neighbors use the parcel in between, and does it really need to have all the restrictions that we have on community garden?
Yeah, but it just seemed, I mean, you don't wanna deal with it now.
Uh, I don't care, I, we can look at it now, does.
I'd, I'd, it's, it's use of land by several individuals or households. And, you know, in the definition section. Martha, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, we did add the, um, statement about the residential accessory. We kinda put that, um, exception in there, just to clarify that that's not what the standards were meant to address. I think if you feel that there's still conflict, instead what we could say, instead of saying they're not considered community gardens, we could say those residential accessory gardens tended by neighbors are not subject to these standards.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that sounds good. And I also, in my notes from the last time through, I have in the margin, Tom's concern, but I didn't note, Tom, what your concern was. Have we taken care of it?
Yes.
Good. That's great. Okay, then.
I, I have one other comment in this area, and it's, um, under maintenance. And it says, the operator shall be responsible for the overall maintenance of the site and shall remove. No, that's not the one I'm looking at, it's the one below. That waste material shall be managed and shall not attract flies or support, support growth of flies, shouldn't you say flies and other pests? I, is it just flies that we're concerned about?
I think we can add other pests.
Anything else? Okay, emergency shelters.
And I think we should start by saying emergency shelters for homeless persons. And then in parentheses, C-section seventeen point four two, point oh two zero. So we get right off without any confusion that we're talking about shelters when there's been a disaster.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that section, uh, is on page two thirty-one, two thirty-two. Other than that, I, I don't have any suggestion.
I have none.
Tom, anything on that?
No.
Farmer's markets. Got nothing. Anybody else? Home occupations.
What, what forty, and then you go down?
I have, on one thirty-nine, I just had something underlined, it says, no more than thirty-three percent of the total floor area of all of the structures on the property may be used in the conduct of the home occupation. So I, I assume that that's the aggregate area of all the structures, so an entire garage could be.
Okay.
And I have anything.
Page one forty, I suggest, uh, under gene, cottage food operation.
Right.
I think a cottage food operation, then, insert, as defined in the California Health and Safety Code, section one one three seven five eight.
It, oh. I was gonna say, it says, it refers to the Health and Safety Code below, but not the same citation.
Right.
Yeah, this is the definition of what a cottage food operation is, which I think is important that people understand what it is, that we can then regulate.
Yep.
Uh, that, that reference again, um.
One one three seven five eight, health and safety.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Public comment?
I wondered where the limits, just one moment, Tom, the limit, the dollar limitations came from, and if are we setting those, or are those set by the, so maybe we should just refer, it's set to the dollar amounts to to the California Health and Safety Code, wherever they set those dollar amounts, so that if they change, we're up to date.
Don't we have a general rule that any, that anything we cite to, if it's replaced, automatically set? I thought we have that.
But this doesn't cite to that, it just gives the dollar amounts in that section.
What you're suggesting is that we do cite to.
Yeah.
Which I think is a good suggestion.
Uh, we, it could have the numbers in there and say, or as be, may be modified by, put the citation in, I don't.
I think just putting the citation in is best. And assuming that it's in there.
It is. I, yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Tom, you had something else?
Yeah, it's, uh, back on one thirty-seven and one thirty-eight, we talked about employee housing for farm workers, specifically for farm workers. And my question goes to, we, we have this section, and we have the other section about camping on private property. And I'm wondering where we fit in the, you know, the, like in the timber zone, where we have marking crews come in, and, you know, they come in, in RVs and tents, and they, you know, mark the, the, uh, the cut, the area to be cut, and then they move on, um, uh, I mean, it's not employee housing, it's not really farm worker housing, but it's not really owners camping on their own property. Is there something where we have, where, is that just considered like an accessory to agricultural use, and so we just?
I would think it would be.
We used to have.
Okay.
Like you bring in a team of people over, they're gonna, for three nights, harvest the grapes, yeah.
So that's just the exception, we, yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure we're not outlawing something that we do all the time, yeah.
Good thought.
So temporary housing, camping.
Do you, do you think we need something in here about that?
Well.
No.
I think we should look and see if it's covered elsewhere, take a moment. I, we don't have to do it right this second, but just make a marking that we wanna look at that and make sure it is covered somewhere. If it's not covered somewhere else, clearly add it to this section. I'm gonna put it on our list.
When you mentioned temporary housing, you mentioned temporary housing. How did you mean that in relation to this?
In this area?
Yeah.
So, when, uh, they hire outside people to harvest or to prune an orchard, they sometimes come from somewhere else entirely, and they might be camping on the land while they do that for three days or five days, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Not camping necessarily, some, probably more likely.
It's not recreational.
Yeah.
But I guess what I'm worried about is the conditions that it would be under while they're camping.
Well, right, I think that's, that's why we're saying, either has to be covered somewhere else in our code, and we need to check to see what's allowed, or we need to put, put a little bit of, uh, guardrails on it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, um, you know, that raises some, raises some concerns, I mean, and having been in my farm work. And having been a migrant farm worker myself, you know, the conditions can be rather poor.
Right. And I think there are a lot, there is legislation around that. So if we could find where it is, we could just refer to it.
Right, the concern being that on page one twenty-eight, we talked about accessory uses. And it says accessory uses shall be subject to the same regulations as a principal use and any standards applicable to specific uses and activities found in this title. So we don't wanna confuse this kind of use, like with camping, because it's separate, it should be regulated separately for the reasons that Commissioner just suggested, so that they have.
So I think that's a good one for us to do a little research on and check. Martha might.
Martha, now, yeah, well, I have some thoughts. So she and I can talk about that probably tomorrow. We usually meet. I'll put it on the list.
Thank you.
My sense that I'm trying to move as so long as fast as I can.
Yes, you go.
Okay.
My next thing is on page one forty-two.
Yes. So now, mobile home parks.
Yeah.
We're talking about, yeah.
Yep, bottom of page one forty-two, park and recreation areas. J. Each mobile home park shall provide a central recreation area. The word of needs to be put in there. So it's area of a minimum of hundred square feet. Big deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I had a question on that section. I'm not, I didn't write anything. So I'm not sure what I was questioning. I, I think it was just that all mobile home parks are required to have a communal area, I guess. I mean, we don't require every subdivision to have a communal area. Although it makes sense. And they always do.
Yeah.
So, nothing for me.
Okay.
Tom, was there anything?
I'm okay with the buffer space. I, I just note that a number of mobile, mobile home parks that I'm seeing are starting to crop up in post, post-mining operations, where, you know, they've put that section to bed, and they rehab it into a mobile home park. So, you know, I'm sure that the minimum buffer would be different if that were the situation. You guys, I'm confident you'll set a good buffer.
Okay.
Between the mobile home park and the mining operation.
Yes, I think there's overs required by the mining operation. If they're, if you're saying if this portion of the mining operation is continuing where they are reclaiming it, and a portion of it is completed.
Right.
And they're trying to sell that. I actually have seen a few things lately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, outdoor dining and seating.
I don't have anything for rural home industry.
He's just trying to even move. He's on board.
Take advantage.
Classes the last time.
I, I actually had a comment on outdoor display and sales. And I might have missed this in my scanning, but I believe that it needs to be entirely contained on the private property and not spill into the public right of way. And it talks about not approaching parking spaces, driveways, pedestrian walkways, or required landscape areas, but.
But look at, look at E, it says, "And shall not disrupt the normal function of the site or its circulation." Should not.
I think that in some of our little historic places, in, in any town, there are sometimes spaces in the public right of way that, that they take over, like between the trees along the street. And really, I get complaints about that all the time, that businesses are using the public right of way for their display area.
Wouldn't that be under the required landscape areas, or?
No, because it's not required. I'm just, that has to be contained entirely on the private property, not in a public right of way.
Okay, noted.
Public comment?
Yes.
I don't see any regulation of the moving, moving displays. Are you allowing moving displays?
You mean temporary? Are you talking about signs or?
No, I'm talking about mobiles that move with the wind and stuff like that.
Oh, okay.
That's under signage.
That's under signage, but I don't see it here, so I was curious. Because people sell those, like there's a, there's a, there's a business I've seen that drives people nuts, where they have like thirty of those little twirly things in the front for sale, so they're not signs.
Hanging from the trees in front that are in the public right of way.
Yeah. It's pretty not. I won't, I won't, I won't out the town where that is. But if you want them, that's okay.
As long as it's restricted to the private property.
Yeah, I feel like it's okay as long as it's on their own property. Okay, then work to rural home industry.
Okay, and I would suggest, right at the very beginning again, where it says rural home industries, in parentheses, we say C-section seventeen point four two point oh three oh. Parenthesis. And for anybody who wants to look at it right now, it's on page two thirty-nine. Then under allowed activities, when we're talking about rural home industries may process, fabricate, or manufacture goods or commodities, but not those which are hazardous or produce excessive noise, dust, I would insert odor or traffic. And I don't see, I don't know where we have any procedures for, I mean, we talk about permits and stuff here, but I don't see where we have anything saying what kind of permit, how does it apply for? I must be missing something.
Uh, it's a conditional use permit.
Where, where does it say that?
That is not only for the.
So that should be reflecting back on the, in the tables? So we added rural home industry as a specific use.
In each zoning.
In each zone.
With a.
Enumerated in the table as a CUP.
Okay. Should we mention that in this, or is that? Know what she says. Okay?
Public comment?
Yeah, I see it here. Sure.
But we could have, in addition to C-section seventeen point four two point oh three oh, have a semicolon and.
CUP required.
Or, or cite to the tables.
Right.
Well, we do have that general thing at the beginning of this. And so if you add it, it's there, then I would add it to every one of these, every section, and then I think that's where you really get into this redundancy. So we do have.
Okay, Martha, I respect that.
I, but that's not true, that every single one of these things requires a CUP or an AUP, like outdoor dining and seating does not, except under certain circumstances.
But I also wouldn't, so I wouldn't put that, those specifics in there. What I would say generally is where, you know, allowed in the use tables and how. Because what I don't wanna do is looking forward in the future, you think you're changing a permit requirement, and you change the table, but you forget that permit requirement for a CUP is also mentioned somewhere else.
So maybe the comment that says, see, see the base zoning tables for allowed locations or allowed zoning.
Maybe do that back, start.
Yeah, let's see, which.
Back, back on page one twenty-eight, where we started to play. Maybe have some sort of maybe under applicability. Well, there it is.
Yeah.
Sorry. Under oh two zero C, uses are allowed only when authorized by the planning permit required by zones, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there you could put a reference to the tables.
Well, we have the reference to the tables here.
Well, I mean, I meant to the, the chapter that has the tables.
Right.
But it's not just one chapter, it's a subtitle too. It's a subtitle, so there's multiple chapters.
Okay, then a reference to the subtitle. All I'm saying is have people look back to the tables.
Okay, B has that reference.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's fine.
You've taken care of everything. Thank you very much. Okay.
Public comment?
My next question is back on rural home industry. Under subsection C, additional standards RM zone. What?
Oops.
What?
Rural man.
Starting from.
It's the one we started to get rid of and then brought back, right?
We need to strike that, because we're still getting rid of the RM zone, so, yeah.
Okay.
But isn't there some sort of a accommodation for those people that we're keeping?
Yeah, so instead of applying for the RM zone and a use permit, which is the way it is now, we're simply saying, you can apply for a use permit. And then we've enumerated the specific use in the tables under certain zones.
Okay.
So I think we just need to not necessarily say additional standards RM zone. We can, we can change that.
Still, but those additional standards would still apply?
We can still apply the standards, yeah, but they don't need to be called additional, and we need to take out the references to the RM zone.
You just doctor it.
Yeah, we'll doctor it up.
Yeah, just gonna rename and re-reference it. Got it, okay. Did you have something? Tom, is there something you wanted to comment on this area?
It's back on the rural industries, rural home industries. I just wanna, maybe Gina can talk with Doug Oliver about this. I know Doug's working on the buy right accessories for agricultural buildings. The problem I see in counties is that instead of coming in with a permit to get your rural home industry before you build the building, what people are doing is they're using the exceptions for, you know, accessory buildings to store your tractor in, and they build the building first, right? And then they come back in later and say, oh, yeah, I, I've decided I don't wanna actually store my tractor there on the weekends. I actually wanna run, you know, an industrial shop here eight hours a day.
Yeah.
And so what you end up with is situations where if they come in with a permit for the permit for the industry, you would have said, you know, located here, where your neighbor's not gonna hear your industry going, not there, where you just built your accessory structure.
Right, and that would be really dangerous for them, because, you know, if we do find that those impacts exist through the process of a CUP, then I would say that they've got some issues. And they're gonna have to mitigate it somehow, and if they can't mitigate it, then we don't all know what that means. But, and there are different occupancy levels too with the building department. So they're gonna have to do some conversions to that building to satisfy that new occupancy, so.
So the planning department will be able to.
Those will all shake out in the process if that actually happens.
It's why we got rid of the buy right agricultural buildings under the building code.
Did we used to have that in place?
You could buy, build an agricultural building with no permits.
Yeah.
It was an accepted.
It's funny, because a lot of the old timers will say, you don't need, you don't need a building permit for an ag building, and I'm like, but yeah, you do. So it's obviously way before my time.
As the winery industry grew, that went away, and you did need a permit for any kind of agricultural building. And now Doug is looking at, can we go back and give the agricultural communities, you know, the right to build a shed for their tractor? But it's.
Right. And, and the problem, and, and that's not, yeah, and that's a good, that's a good thing, not a problem. The problem is when people use that as a way to get around the rules, and then they come to you and say, well, I just, I, I don't like to be put in this position where, where, you know, people are appealing to the planning commissioner, the board, you know, I spent, you know, so much, a hundred thousand dollars on this building, and now I can't use it for this, you know, my, my shop.
But again, that wasn't the intended use when you built it, so.
Perhaps you should disclose.
Tough luck, too bad, so sad.
It's easy, yeah, it's easy to talk about it like that in the abstract here.
Yeah.
But when, when someone is coming to the planning commission, having already built the building, you know, it's, it's, it's hard for the commission to say no, or hard for the supervisors to say no. So if we could, if we could, if, if there's any way we could put something in here to alert people that, you know, we're about that's not gonna be a good way of doing things, it would be good. As opposed to sounding like, oh, I can always modify an existing building and do this. Because sometimes that's not gonna work.
I'd, I'd see that as a pretty tough drafting problem.
Okay.
Seems to me that the planning commission has been pretty good about standing up to such an argument.
Okay. Okay, maybe what, maybe if Doug, maybe Doug can put something like that in his, if, if he's gonna go back to allowing buildings without permits, maybe he can put something in his provision about that. Don't count on it being turned into something else.
The problem is, but when you allow them without permits, you don't even know about them happening.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
To us.
Yeah. Yeah, but you could, if you put in the code and says, don't, don't count on your ag building successfully converting to, you know, a rural home industry, or something like that, or to a whatever other. If we're gonna allow, I guess, may, maybe I should take this up with Doug.
Well, I, I think it's, the suggestion is that there be a warning here that if you have an unpermitted agricultural structure, it may require additional work to be able to use it for one of these other purposes.
Even if it's permitted. Even if it's a permitted structure, you may not.
It'll need, I'm certain it'll need a conversion permit, because that's gonna require a different occupancy. And they're gonna have to proceed to the building department with some sort of a permit application.
Okay.
So I think perhaps, Tom, to your, talking to Doug about whatever public outreach he has about allowing agricultural buildings to be constructed without a permit could also include a warning or a heads up that should they wish to use that building in the future, it will have to become a permitted structure.
And its use will have to be.
Right, exactly. I mean, that might be the place, is wherever somebody's reading that I don't need a permit, they could also, right, have a little education on what risks they're taking with that building.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, on, on page one forty-five, back on the rural home industry, under C-six. Noise levels generated by the rural home industry shall not exceed sixty LDN as measured at, and I. Suggest we add the property line of any adjoining residentially his own property.
Yeah.
The property line of any, and then take out the.
Here we have a ride.
Well, we're gonna do a, I thought we were gonna carry over for now and then do a standalone ordinance shortly after.
I think that.
Placeholder.
Yeah, we, but I do have a question is. The way we have it now, private events or parties. Anniversary parties, you know, whatever, a big thing where somebody would typically go rent a.
Or a wedding.
I'm trying to avoid that really.
I know.
Anyway. Isn't addressed under special events because it's not a special event under our current definition. Do we tell, so, but an, an event center on that is allowed by right or within AUP. Is where those people would go. So they don't need a permit then as long as they're using an event center. If they're doing it in their backyard.
I think we, if I remember correctly, going back to the trauma of that past hearing. I think that we. Figured out that. That kind of a center would, was not defined, but similar enough to rec zoning to be allowed there. But there wasn't a lot of places where it was close to.
I think it's allowed on some agriculture, on truly agricultural properties.
Except that we had, there was a more narrow definition of the type of. Property and event that would count as agritur. So they'd have to qualify as agritur.
So event center. Is currently allowed as a conditional use. In general forest and general agriculture. And then again, as a conditional use in HC. C one and C two?
Under our current code?
This is.
The new code?
This is the new code. Because the current code does not, does not define event center.
Right, that's why I was saying.
The term event center is new to the draft.
So.
So it's not permitted outright anywhere. So we have conditionally, it's conditionally allowed.
So we used to have something and I don't even remember where this was. Maybe it was just in a handout. That allowed people on their private residential property to have. A private. Event like a fundraiser. It was like a twice a year, three times.
Isn't it twelve times a year?
Depends on what.
Recently, somebody told me that they could do twelve a year.
Right now, you can have up to twelve special events in certain zones. Annually without a permit. But that's only in some particular zones. A one is one of them.
But that's a special event and this is not private.
No. So I think we were.
Are not special events.
We were treating, not, not necessarily fundraisers, private, people hosting their own reunion or their own party. Were treated as accessory uses, like just accessory to single family residential.
Not when it's a big event. And so there are, there are places that allow their favorite charity to have a fundraising event once a year on their property. But that's a. They're not charging for it. It's open to the public in terms of they, I guess they can buy tickets. So then that would be a special event. That would be covered there.
Yeah.
Has that been an issue at all? I think people just do it. They just have a wedding in their backyard and has forty people in as long as the neighbors aren't miffed. It's, I mean, it's only half, they only have however many kids.
The ones that we seem to. The only ones that seem to cause an occasional problem are the, the ones that are renting their facility. To other individuals. So it's not. You having your own private party on your own property. It is someone who is advertising for, you know. Rent of their facility for those types of events.
Well. All of, all this discussion really is, do we need a different definition for a private event party?
I would say so.
Then we could say it's allowed by right up to something and here you go, as an accessory.
We can do how, whatever we want, but we, we've also cautioned that we don't want to get too, too far into.
Yeah, that's typically done at the same.
Modifying this section because we, we think it's gonna, it's gonna need more attention than what we're able to give this subject right now.
Saying, don't put it in this section. Just put a definition for a private event party and clarify that. That it's not this. Right?
I mean, I, don't we already consider a private party is just an accessory use to a single family?
Well, I mean, in either code isn't defining what a private party is.
And that's what led to our situation.
Right. Right.
So all, that's all I'm suggesting is maybe we need, need to define, define private event party and say. Whatever our current position is on it and leave the special event thing for our, the, the details of it to a future date.
And when do we anticipate that future date? Do we have any idea when we're gonna come back and talk about this? Because it's a big deal for a lot of.
Well, it is a big deal and we have to get direction from the board as to how much of a priority this is, you know, I mean, they. They hand down a list of priorities to the planning department on an annual basis and. And so far, no board, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, this is something that we know is in, is in our list, but I, I don't believe it's necessarily, is it a priority?
I think it's one of the priorities that the board members have. My only question is whether defining private event would necessarily require us to distinguish it from a special event, which, which gets into the whole thing. I, I, that could be a distraction from just. Adopting this.
Or do we leave that question to the.
Part of the discussion. I, I would recommend that.
So then the only thing is, we, we should have come back to us sooner rather than later, but let's not let it hamstring us now.
Right.
So are we talking about going ahead with this basically the way it is now?
Okay.
With the idea that it's gonna have a fresh look?
Yes.
It doesn't, doesn't mean we don't have suggestions, right? And I'm not, I'm not planning, I'm, I'm trying to get clarifications to what we have here. One, I think. Where we. In subsection B on page one forty-six. There, the site. To event centers. And I do think we need to have a. Reference to section seventeen point four two, point oh three oh. Which, anybody wants to look now, it's on page two thirty-seven. Then. Down. A one. Excuse me, subdivision B one, the reference to A one and AP zones. Down toward the end of the new language. Let's see, provided no more than three percent of the total land or ten acres, whichever is less, is used. Then there just needs to be a comma and take out the break in. Under. Under subsection two. Other zones in all zones other than A one and AP, special events beneath the word R, A R E. Allowed. Then. In C, again, I'm, I'm really not going to the substance of this. I'm just trying to make it clear. Permit required. Subsection one, special events may be held on any lands located within the unincorporated boundaries of the county. Subject to approval and validation of the appropriate use permit, comma. Except as provided in. Sections. Seventeen point two five. Point. Oh nine zero. Point B. Point one. Point A. And. Seventeen point two five. Point one nine oh. Point D. It just gives a quick reference to where the exceptions are. Exceptions or exemptions. Get those? Gina? Thank you. Now, this is substantive. On page one forty-nine. Under conditional use permit. At the top of the page. Subsection three. The second sentence, it would require interdepartmental and or outside agency routing. These types of events are characterized as having a large attendance. We ought to come up with some number there. An attendance above two hundred. Page one forty-nine, top of the page.
This is all the special event section that I thought we were waiting for.
Exactly.
I thought, I'm sorry, I, I thought, I thought we were saying that we were gonna put this in and then we're gonna redoing.
We are, but we're, we're.
Okay, so.
Gonna address the whole thing and we'll be fine.
Okay, okay.
I think we're looking to have some direction from the board on this specifics.
Okay.
And we're not really having a huge issue with. This moment other than the people who refuse to get it.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm ready to go to single room. But those earlier suggestions I made for clarification.
Yeah. Okay. I got nothing on single room.
The only thing I have is the. At the very start of the section, single room, occupancy, SROs, then. C section seventeen point four two. Point oh one oh. That's in parentheses. That's all I have.
And then we have telecommunications facilities.
Which I haven't read the submissions on that yet.
So. Are we prepared to talk about this or is this one we want to put off to our next meeting?
That would be great.
Definitely, but just to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Next Wednesday.
That would be great.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
So. Were you asking for something of us or? Why do we keep pushing this out?
I think because we all got a. A look at the. Pieces in our current, in our recent hearings. And I think so we all have ideas without rewriting this like from scratch. But what kinds of things we.
So you just, because it's gonna take us more time to go through it. You're not, you're not asking Martha and I to actually, okay. Because I was thinking I missed something.
Because I think we're trying to skip over things that we think are gonna take more substantive discussion. Try to get through all the simple things so that you guys can get those things out of the way.
That's fine. I just wanted to be sure that I wasn't supposed to do some homework.
No.
For once? No. Come on Gina. Do some extra homework.
My homework, my homework is not finished. My dog ate it.
I don't think we're asking for anything.
Okay.
I know that there are comments from the public about what they'd like to see.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we jumping forward to one sixty-two then?
Right, to temporary uses. So that would be. Is it April third, our next meeting? Is that my next Wednesday?
Is it?
Okay, great.
Good, temporary uses. Boy, we're making great progress.
Yeah, we are.
That was only true.
Well, we are really making good progress.
Skipping along.
Just that we deferred a few things. Okay, temporary uses. I didn't have much here.
Okay, I, I just. I have a, a couple of questions. On page one sixty-three. Subparagraph two. Nonprofit fundraising. It talks about how the activities are allowed in non-residential zones. If they're in residential zones, do they become special events or what?
I suppose.
So this covers what you were looking at before, Michelle.
You're sort of, yeah. Well, in.
In non-residential, huh?
Non-residential. But. You know. I don't know that there's the, the counterpart statement about they're not allowed in residential zones. I mean, I want to say they are allowed only in non-residential zones.
And these are required without a use permit. It's like inside a.
Maybe God, that phone cookie is outside of the grocery store.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of like burningman.org. I don't know. Is it a nonprofit? It could be enormous.
Well, that's what I was thinking. And I, it says a five oh one C, but as, it's, so it's not three, six, seven, you know, any five oh one C.
Should that be instead of pursuant to tax exempt organizations under? I don't want to see. Maybe organizations which are tax exempt pursuant to.
Right. So it, it does beg the question. Would it be okay to do this in a residential zone, but maybe it wouldn't be without a use?
Right, under.
Let's see, under.
Yes.
I mean, I think this, this does get into sort of special events again. I'm just wondering if we should loop, lump all of these things together in the discussion, right? It just seems like. Otherwise, we're kind of. I, it, it just seems to me that this concept will come up when the board's giving us direction, the idea of, well, we wanna help our nonprofits. Do an event, we wanna distinguish those from private event, I mean, I think all of that would probably be part of the same. Discussion. At a special event.
I don't think we can take this out because we have this situation literally almost every weekend, there is some. Organization having, you know, chicken in a barrel or. It seems like it's working, those are not an issue for us, are they? Things in a park or?
No. But this allows it to be in commercial or industrial.
Exactly, and so I think that's the real question is, do we want to allow it? In parks and. Does that need to be expanded, that commercial?
I'm missing what we're considering right now, this, this section talks about non-residential zones, what, what would we be expanding?
Non-residential, so yeah, so it's fine.
Okay.
It's all covered. Even the park. I think. It's fine, I think we are gonna have to come back and look at it to make it coordinate with whatever we end up with on special events.
Yeah.
But I think for now. I don't have any real problems with that.
Okay. I don't, I've been moving into the mobile home or trailer as a temporary residence. Maximum number under three A. Only one temporary residence is allowed per assessor parcel. Except in the case of destruction of the onsite dwelling such that it cannot be occupied during reconstruction. Why? In other words, you could have more than one. When you have destruction of the onsite dwelling? I, I don't get this exception.
It seems like the intent is for the one that you're tearing down, you can't stay, you can't reside in that while you're tearing it down.
Have one.
Right.
But it's considered dwelling.
But the.
So would you like more than one is what it says?
Yeah, because it's, when you're building the house, you can't live in it either, and you only have one.
Except that you might now. A temporary residence. A single Y mobile home record, so I think what it's saying is you might be allowed to have more sufficient to contain your belongings of the demolished.
But that wouldn't necessarily be.
But is that really what you want to say, or should we still limit it to one?
I, I don't see the reason for the exception.
Public comment?
Yes.
I, 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 when I read this, I thought the intent was that if I had. A, a home. And I put it, there was a temporary residence. Adjacent to the home. Already, right? But there was a flood or something in my home. All of a sudden. I'm out. So I thought the idea here was if someone got flooded out of their house, they could put another temporary residence. In addition to the one that they already had there.
What's the authorization for the one that they already had there?
Right.
Right, well, I, I thought, what's I meant, if, if, if there was only one, let's say there was a temp, already a temporary residence, say you had a.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, Tom, why, why is it there, what, what's its authorization?
Whatever, whatever authorization it had, if there was a, a resident who came back, you know, your, your daughter came back to live with you or something.
This doesn't allow that.
Yeah.
Not a temporary, it's not a. Trailer, mobile home, trailer is a temporary residence.
No.
Okay, what was there?
When a building permit.
Is issued.
Yeah.
For a permanent residence.
This situation in.
Oh, I see.
Right?
Yeah.
Cause you have a building permit for the reconstruction.
Right.
But it seems like we talked about this last time.
I didn't have any notes of that.
About whether or not we, we wanted to make accommodations for the situation that Tom is describing. A short term use of allowing someone else to live on your property while they're dislocated for whatever reason. And I personally don't have any problem with allowing that on larger parcels, that might be a problem in subdivision.
Yes.
I don't think we ever really resolved that as a temporary use.
I don't, I don't see the reason for the exception, if somebody does.
I don't see the reason for the exception either.
Let's get rid of it then.
So that we can just get rid of it entirely.
Oh, you don't want the maximum number at all?
Oh, no, I.
Well, it's one, it already says.
Right.
Single.
A sing.
That's true.
A wide.
Oh, single wide, supposed to double wide.
I, I don't know, I think maybe having, having that first sentence is a good one. Just to make clear.
No, I, I, I think, I think so too.
Okay.
Per assessor's parcel.
Right.
Period. Yes.
Okay.
It's just the exception that we're trying to get rid of.
Just take care of it.
I can, we can redline that.
Then. The meaning's clear under C, little I, one. But I think it would be clearer, the six month period may be extended for a maximum of A. Six months. Period. Provided that, and I think we should put this into the A, B. And C, so.
Why not just say extended for another six months?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, I think the way it reads now is extended for an additional six months, not to exceed. One year.
Now, what I'm, what I'm reading here is the six month period may be extended for a maximum of six months period, so I was trying to get around that. But I think for another six months is fine.
Yeah.
But then provided that, comma, A, the foundation for the residence has been completed, proof of completion, blah, 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 blah. B, installation and a final inspection of a septic system or. Proof, instead of of proof, or proof of connection to a sewer system. And C, submittal of receipts, I just think that's a clearer way of it.
And if you wanna make sure that that second six month period is it, you can say in no case shall be extended for more than twelve months at the end.
If you want.
So. I have a question. So this isn't for the situation where someone has ordered a double wide trailer. It's sitting on their property, but the foundation isn't built yet. And so they're. Living in the double wide on piers. Cause you wouldn't be able to do that in this instance, cuz it's only allows a single wide.
If the intention is for it to become a permanent.
Right.
Part of the parcel, then it has to have a permanent foundation except in a mobile home park where they.
Right.
To be on piers.
Then why are we limiting it to a single wide?
Because they're not, a double wide is unlikely to get moved again.
Okay.
No, common sense, not getting here.
Well, well, as you said, I'm, I'm, I was thinking maybe they had two pieces, when you said, when we did that, we were trying to figure a reason for the maximum number. If it was in two pieces delivered and sitting there, but you, that also you wouldn't want somebody living in, so I get it, that makes sense.
Okay.
I think we don't want them to get too comfortable with the, the thought behind that.
So do you wanna add at the end of I, in no event shall. Shall a. Mobile home or trailer. Exist there for more, you know, for, for more than twelve months, wanna put that caveat that they don't interpret another six months, meaning you can keep it.
Another and another and another.
Right, sure.
I, I think realistically that many, depending on where a construction project is, it could easily take more than a year these days. So I, if I was gonna do that, I would limit it to a, a longer period. Just. I just see it all the time that a house takes two years to rebuild or build in the first place.
So have a number, a little number two.
Maybe start with under C under duration, start it with twelve months. The twelve month period may be extended for.
Or do we wanna just keep extending it for the life of the building permit? I mean. If you're a home. If you're building your own home, right?
Right.
It could take a lot longer than it would if you were a con, hired a contractor. So. You know, you might not be able to get it done, and as long as you're making progress and satisfying the building department, your permit is active. As long as the act, as long as the permit is active and not otherwise, you know, expired.
I just, what I remember Doug Oliver saying is the problem with some of the temporary residences is that they start decaying themselves, I don't, I just remember. I know, I might be mixing up something else here because we're talking about an actual single wide, but I remember the concern being that. Temporary structures tend to. Well, and, and not, they're not fully up to. Code or not fully up to.
Well, they're not, they're not designed for permanent occupancy.
Yeah.
So.
People do while they're building.
Right.
Right, but it's supposed to be on a temporary basis, not an extended length of time.
If it was a, a single wide, they could put a foundation under it and permit it as an ADU.
Right.
There would be nothing stopping them from doing that. If it's an RV or something on wheels, well, then it's gonna continue to be an RV or something. It can't be lived in, bless you. Full time, right now, they are coding it. So I think that's a good suggestion, Gina, I would be fine with allowing people to do it so long as they're making progress on their permit. I mean, if they.
That's what I is supposed to be doing, but maybe it's being unrealistic. Realistic.
You know, people used.
We wanna be realistic here.
People used to build a house really in six months all the time, that, the houses that are being built these days are not being built in six months for the most part. Especially someone who's building the room.
Well, but I mean, I. Okay. Maybe what we do is change I so that it can be. Can be extended for a maximum of what?
Until.
Twelve mile provided or extended.
Well, what you could do. What you could do is just have the duration be while that building permit is active.
Yeah.
Versus having them coming in every kind of six months.
Right.
And then you would need to either remove it or change it into the ADU, whatever, fire to occupancy.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the building department will have those records, cuz you have to officially extend.
Oh, we actually, right, right, right.
So I don't think.
So having.
And, and they more or less, they call it an application, but they more or less register that unit with us. For our records, and so they have a form that they have to fill out, and they have to keep the, the. Temporary trailer permit in the window of the trailer, and, and it's not, it's, it's not, I don't think it's common for the, you know, for the building department to like have. There's only a couple inspectors, and so everybody kinda knows, they stick with the job, so it's not like you're gonna have, you know, somebody that doesn't know what's going on.
This is under temporary uses, not requiring a use permit, so this would not have.
Well, they call it a permit, but it doesn't, it's not a discretionary permit, it's basically just a piece of paper that is filled out. And they stick it in the file and the other one goes in the window of the.
But this is.
Temporary trailer.
Building department?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so, so under duration, we just say for the life of the building permit?
Yeah.
Right.
Martha?
He let Gina and Martha work out that language, I'm sure they.
Right. Great.
Public comment?
Yes.
What is the general, what's the usual term of a permit, is it three years?
No, I think it's six months. It's six months, but you have to show progression and, and I can't speak exactly to that, but.
Permit is much longer than that, but every six months it has to be.
Extended.
The first one is longer.
Right.
Because you have, that you have to have a first inspection within the first six months, then you, I think you have a year.
Right.
You have to start extending it, which happens, no problem, as long as you're actually continuing to move forward.
So that, that takes care of all our interests here, so the life of the building permit.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
Right.
Marvel.
Easy peasy. Responsible for seeing if there's progress.
Yeah.
So if there isn't progress, they won't issue the extension?
No.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the building permit expires, then the temporary trailer permit expires.
So what's the language gonna be?
Our language.
We'll figure it out.
That's what Martha's gonna do.
But, so you could just keep applying for the six months until.
Well, there's criteria that, that, that the building department requires you to meet, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it's changed at various times. They really encourage you to wrap it up, and some subdivisions also have time limits on. Construction.
It's, it's not like you can, you know, we can, the county will issue you a building permit, and then you literally sit there for two years and don't do anything. And then, I mean, at some point, they're gonna, they're gonna force you to, to make some progress, or they're not gonna extend your, your permit anymore.
Well, and there are permits that are very old, but it's because almost everything is done and they're doing. They're doing the work themselves and they're getting to it, like every summer they do a project.
Right.
You know.
Okay, well, I think we've taken care of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm ready for a break, so. This is probably good before we look at temporary uses requiring a temporary use permit. So do we want to take an early lunch or just breathe?
Five minute break.
Five minute, okay, then, no, okay.
Can we hold ten minutes, I have to make a quick phone.
Yeah, so let's at eleven twenty be back.
I was just bringing up with, with Gina, I just wanna briefly visit the nonprofit fundraising.
Okay.
I was just wondering to, just to make sure that your intention from a policy perspective. Is that if somebody has. A large field somewhere. And the group that wants to use it for a big festival is, happens to be a nonprofit. And they're doing it for a cause or for their own nonprofit organization, that you want these to be. Okay. Without any limits of people, noise, anything, without there needing to be a use permit, cuz. I can see a lot of loopholes here, so I just wanna make sure you're okay with the potential. Consequences of that.
I think that most of them are going to be. Getting a, an event permit or a temporary use permit because they are going to impact circulation, parking, all of that, if you have a big event, it's. To, it would be stretched to say you're not impacting any of those things.
I'm wondering if a layperson organizing event would look at that and say, well, as long as we don't block traffic, we're not disrupting normals, would, would they understand that? I mean, it's a policy call, what you wanna allow.
Do we need to be more detailed in the.
Maybe.
So long as there is no.
Capacity.
So I, I don't know, if I would read that, if I were trying to do. What arguably is a special event, open to the public. I might even create a nonprofit for the sole purpose of getting around the permit requirement be, because of how big of a party I could have under this.
It would be fairly debatable, wouldn't it?
Well, maybe we. Well, maybe we limit it to the number of people per day.
I mean, do you care about amplifying sound or any of that? I just, you know.
Well, the amplification has to terminate at a prescribed time anyway.
I would think you'd have to say it would.
It doesn't, cause we, this is not a special thing.
There should be a reference here that says you still have to comply with all the basic.
This is why I was just wondering if we would wanna wait.
Martha looked at this and said, it's Girl Scouts in front of Sierra Hills Market.
Which it could be.
Which it could be, which is great. That was the intention.
Yeah.
Um.
Because I think this.
Immediately thought, oh, it's an event.
Right, I just say, I I see, I mean, to me, I I feel like I could have a field day with this loophole if I were something about organizer.
Well.
So it's a policy call, really.
Yeah, so I would say the duration of it would be one issue.
The amount of people.
You have noise, food, all of those things that you still have to.
So what if you meet the current definition of special event, but you also happen, cause it's open to the public? But you're also a non, are you in this box or are you in our existing special event box?
On my events that are done by nonprofits, I permit and do the whole process as though it's a special event.
But I'm saying, does this give her?
Think people could throw a special event as described by Julie, um, and under this.
Based on their tax status.
Under this, yeah.
Right, so the tax status doesn't have anything to do with the impact on the land.
No.
Right.
Just like being open to the public or not open to the public doesn't necessarily have anything to do.
I mean, an easy way of of taking care of that is limiting the number of people involved.
Or the so, the, the, I, you know, if it's a two foot by six foot table.
Yeah.
That's one thing.
Right, but then we, you know, we also have the drive through chicken in the barrel dinner, you know, fundraiser for.
Or you can do a T a T P.
But if we.
No, not necessarily.
But if we say for for uh temporary fundraising activities uh with attendance less than forty-five or something like that. Um, it seems to me that that immediately takes care of most of those concerns and and still lets the Girl Scouts sell their cookies, et cetera.
Perhaps, I think maybe that other permits may be required too. If you're selling food, you need a health department permit for it. If you're selling alcohol, you need a liquor license. I mean, there's just a whole slew of other things. That, but that to Julie's point, somebody might think, wow, this is just gonna let me off the hook for everything.
But if we, okay, but if we limit it to the the number of people can can be at these activities.
So they're gonna have to do projected attendance, cause they might not know, right? That's the.
Well, I mean, it, but you can have at the end of the of the section, other permit requirements may apply.
Mm-hmm, and do you list them to give them?
Well, if you've listed them, then you're saying, well, you can say including but not limited to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, cause it's gonna depend on what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So I think this all comes down to also that there's no way for the so.
See, I I actually think.
Residential zones.
I think the board will wanna weigh in, I really do on, I I do agree that they're gonna wanna treat all these different events differently, but I have a feeling that they would wanna weigh in on policy, just like for this, at the same way that they would for special events. And they might wanna be very generous.
Well, I think this is trying to, I think we are trying to view this differently than the intention for it, which was you can have a a booth, no, no greater than ten by ten.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you did something like that, yeah.
That's our intention, that's what we should say.
Right.
And then leave all the rest of it to our later discussion where it all comes together. Do we have anything like? I don't recognize this section. So it's not.
Martha, this is new, right?
This is new, and so I think you could do a couple things. You could, we can take this out and you can continue operating as you have been and revisit it as part of the special events discussion. Um, we could add in, so that's one option. Another option is adding kind of a size on a booth, say, and that's the second option. The third option would be to add in some looser language, like something that it does, you know, the then, the activities, I wouldn't even say events, and you notice this does not say events, this says activities. Um, we could say the activities do not substantially change the character of the existing use of the site. And not perfect, but again, you would revisit that as part of your special events um portion. Or you could just leave it as drafted.
Or you can require a T U P over a certain size um until we get there.
So again, that's that size, right? That's I think the option too. Or you could just require a T U P for all of these and.
Well, if you require a temporary use permit, they'll have to come in and then the the staff can determine, no, 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 this is a conditional use permit. It's big enough that you or.
The four H bake sale and the Girl Scout cookie table, they're not gonna, they're not gonna know to come in and get a D U P.
I mean, you could do something like twenty square feet and anticipated, uh, you know, two, two people or five people manning it and where where it could be reasonably anticipated that you'll have no more than twenty people an hour or something like that.
Right, I think that that would allow those little, and with the approval of the property owner.
Well, yeah, and the same thing here, I mean, I was talking to Gina, to the extent we do, we allow like nonprofit parades and things, we do, the county, to the extent they're on county property or there might be additional, they might have to enter some separate agreement outside of the zoning code, you know.
What about, I mean, the drive through uh taco sales? Um, and I've. Yeah, or the fire department for that matter, um, that, you know, I hesitate to do a a square footage thing if we're talking about something that's a drive through. Um, have to make sure that it's, it contemplates.
Well, we could just say it expands the existing use only in an inconsequential and temporary way and up up to, we expect no more than blah blah an hour, I don't know, but it, then it gets fuzzy.
Yeah, but I think you're, I think you're getting close.
I think that we should draft something that applies to these temporary sales and pickup sorts of things. Cover the basics, have it really short and sweet, and everything else would require some sort of a permit. So any event size.
Yeah.
Activity.
Public comment?
Yes.
I I agree, I think um it would be helpful to to list some of the examples you said in the, so temporary fundraising activities such as
Cookie sales.
Cookie sales, whatever the four H does, you know.
Right.
Just so that people get the clue that this is the small things. Um, I think that would help.
They could include in that drive, drive through.
That and defer in the bigger discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Could we replace activities by sales? Also replace activities with sales and that would cover the cookie sales, the chicken in the bucket sales, the um, you know.
Right, and the Renaissance fair.
But that's a special bit.
Yeah, I think maybe that's a good idea.
I'm just saying it may help, also giving those examples, but it may help saying sales versus activities.
Almost all of these things are ticket sales, food sales, snack sales, so I think that would work.
Right.
So.
Cause you could be selling raffle tickets.
Raffle tickets.
Yeah.
So who's gonna?
I think Julie, Gina and Martha volunteered.
I thought.
I don't know if Gina actually did, but I.
I've learned not to volunteer.
You say something.
Julie loves this, she told them.
I do, I remember. Like I said, if I could just get rid of all the other like types of work I don't like to do.
That's a great suggestion.
We'll work on it.
Okay, now we are moving into temporary uses requiring a temporary use. And most of this feels familiar, like it's something we've addressed in the past.
And under three mobile vending, um, I have a idea in my mind what mobile vendors are, even though we don't define it, and it's in need for definition.
Taco truck?
Yeah.
Ice cream truck.
Right, exactly. Uh, actually, do we wanna say mobile vehicle vendors?
No, because you might have a cart, you might have a trailer.
Okay.
You have a lot of carts out there, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great.
Bicycle carts.
Great, okay, anyhow, I, that was the only question I had. Now, with temporary outdoor sales, where garage sales are covered on page one sixty-three. Yard garage sale. Do not any permit.
So are we on to wind and solar energy?
I I just have one on the mobile vending section where it talks about displaced parking. The description sounds like they're displacing their own parking in a parking lot. And it doesn't really address being on the street and displacing public parking.
Right, cause this doesn't apply to mobile vending in in the street. This is just on private property. Mobile vendors in the street would be subject to a curbsman permit, your streets and sidewalks code, other, so this is just on private property.
You'd have to get a use permit through public works or the state.
They're doing it now, cause they seem to just show up.
They just.
Maybe we could say.
That's a whole different issue.
Yeah.
Another thing for the board to weigh in on.
Yeah.
Do we wanna just at the start say mobile vendors on private property in compliance with the problem following standard? Avoid the problem of streams.
Yes, I think that's probably a good idea.
Uh, do we want it limited to uh non-residential?
That's already what it says, that isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Without limitations, if the visiting non-residential use is not open.
Okay, right.
Okay.
On the wind and solar.
Yeah.
Is it wind farm and solar arrays? I don't know.
Oh, are we done completely with that? Okay, yes, good, that's good.
Moving right along.
We like it. Go ahead.
I don't know, I was just looking in the first paragraph there where it says including wind arrays, solar farms, it's usually wind farms and solar.
Well, it, it isn't, this is used primarily to reduce onsite consumption of energy.
So I was just saying the terminology is.
Well, I think of wind farms as being.
All of the energy systems.
Yeah. Yeah, I I just think of them as providing.
A much larger use.
Yeah. Now, I know I brought this up before, but I can't remember what we did with it. It didn't show up. Um, and this actually comes from uh personal experience. We we talk about on the energy systems used primarily to reduce onsite consumption. And I was concerned about when you have adjacent properties, adjoining properties with the same owner, the, and the the gear, the solar array or the wind uh generator is on one parcel and it's providing energy to the adjoining parcel commonly owned, it seems to me that that should be considered to be onsite.
Okay.
And I suggested language.
Did we miss it?
Wait, it didn't, it didn't make it.
Okay.
It's, and I can, this, I'll read it and then I'll provide you, Gina, with a copy. When adjoining parcels are under common ownership, an energy system on one parcel used to reduce consumption of energy on one or more of the of those adjoining por- parcels shall be deemed to be onsite for every adjoining parcel so served.
Okay.
It said under common ownership at the.
Yeah.
Top somewhere, right?
Right, under, when adjoining parcels are under common ownership.
Perfect.
Let me, so you don't have to write that.
Oh, do you have a copy for me? Thank you.
It's like a fortune cookie.
I know, right?
It's a big fortune cookie, but it's quite a fortune.
So that would be somewhere in that first paragraph, talks about onsite.
I think that's a good addition. Do you guys agree?
I do, yes.
Yeah.
So I I only have one other comment in the very first paragraph. The last sentence, it says used primary for offsite and energy, it should be primarily I minor.
Where are you?
You think that's minor, huh? A one, um, right, the the middle of of A one, one acre or more on site provided that they are set, space, back.
Yeah.
See, I I beat you on the minor, minor, minor.
Okay, is there anything else in this section?
Nope.
Okay, so the the plan at this point is to take a lunch break, come back, handle animal keeping.
Including my suggestions for, I mean, the
Yes, for.
The animal provisions in the tables.
Everybody, is this one made available to the public previously? This from weeks ago.
I know, I know Tom has, Tom, this is the insert I sent you at your request.
Y- yes, okay.
Is it published on the website?
No.
Maybe we can put it up there so people can, might be watching and following.
Would that be done during lunch?
Um, I'm sure we could.
You don't eat lunch, Peter.
No, it's actually in that.
Oh. You could share it on screen when you're going over it, yeah.
I don't have it on. No.
And and since this was at least a month ago, I will have some changes that I've suggested to my own thing.
I could. Are you talking about Tim's?
Yeah.
Animal.
This proposed changes to provisions regarding animals in land use regulation tables.
Okay, the ones I gave copies stock.
You handed out the copies.
Um, I can scan it and bring it on a, well, I think I'll just go ahead and see if the net can't just upload it. I don't know, we'll see, we'll figure it out. I don't know, we'll see, we'll figure it out.
I know, I know you sent it to Martha, so it's somewhere in your computer system.
Yeah, because this was emailed, I'm thinking.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I sent it as an attachment to you.
Right, but what I'm saying is it was emailed to me, so Martha's got this. So she can, she can share it if she would like. Otherwise, I'm gonna have to bring it back to the meeting in a thumb drive, so.
So when we return from lunch, we'll do that first, and then we will start on our final section, the trumps and definitions.
After, after doing mine, we'll be doing animal keeping.
Back from lunch, we will do this animal keeping section we were just discussing, and then we will hopefully get done with that relatively quickly, at least get a really good start
Okay.
on the trumps and definitions.
Okay.
If there's some miracle, if we're really quickly, we finish it today, that would be wonderful.
Well, then I propose we come back at noon to.
Um, we're gonna be done by about two thirty, two forty-five, so that's, yeah.
Okay, so until twelve thirty-five?
Yeah.
Twelve thirty-five.
We're back from lunch and recommencing our review of the zoning code update. And we are going to try and take care of some edits to the animal keeping section, including modifications to where animal keeping is allowed in the zone tables.
Gina, I, one thing I've, didn't seem to have with me today was my proposed statute changes for these. The one was about guard animals. You have the?
I have my copy.
That doesn't look like what I'm telling you.
It's here.
Yeah, that's more like it.
I couldn't find mine.
Okay, well, when we get to the animal guarding and pest control, we'll turn to Commissioner Park, Commissioner Parker.
I thought it was attached to that, and then I couldn't find it.
Sure, thank you.
So we want to do that first?
That's up to you.
If we had copies of it.
Oh.
I have mine either.
Well, that, that, there's, there's ordinance, suggested ordinance will come up in the course of our discussion, so.
Okay.
We get copies, maybe Julie could make us some copies of this. Just.
Is it this?
This.
Proposed new ordinance sections?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. You, you don't have those, so you could project those?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Of this, you could make enough copies.
I don't remember. Matter of fact, I had, I had this copy, but I had a heck of a time finding it in my email.
No, I thought.
Get this in here.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, I'm glad you have it.
I'm sure I have.
You probably want to have some help instead, yeah.
So do we want to go ahead and start with those?
Okay, did I? That's great. Hey.
No, this is different.
That's the other. Okay, um. It, if a use requires a permit, I think it probably should be in these, these, these tables at the start of our zoning ordinance, and, uh, the, in particular, I'm.
Found it.
Good. In section six point one eight point oh three oh and section, six point one eight point oh four oh, Title Six, which is entitled animals. It provides that private kennels and commercial kennels can only be licensed under that title, um, if properly zoned under Title Seventeen. So we need to have provisions in here, uh, in the zoning. I'm, I'm. Right now.
We want to look at, probably start on page seventeen at some point.
Yeah.
Where did you have it?
I found mine. You found mine?
Thank you.
Got it.
The one that we will be talking about is the one down at the bottom, animal guarding and pest control. No, thanks. Thank you. The kennel licenses, like the ranch dog permits, are issued by the Director of Animal Control. So it isn't permits that are being issued by the planning department. And just for information, under the definition of kennel in the animals title, a kennel license authorizes four or more dogs or five or more cats to be kept. So if a resident has less than four dogs or less than five cats, the general provisions of Title Six, uh, like licensing and vaccination stuff apply to them. But you don't need a kennel. Ranch dog permits are required if a rancher has more than three dogs in pursuing a livestock production endeavor. So what I'm suggesting is that we should add uh, references to these various, uh, uses into our resource zones, uh, tables, and indicate on there, uh, whether they're permitted as of right or under a, a use permit. So now I'm getting to this, this table of mine. So again, starting on pages seventeen and eighteen, under residential uses, this is the first mode, uh, in that table. We've, I'm proposing we add private kennel and ranch dogs and animal care with the, uh, with the indications of all those would be permitted under the, uh, resource zones. But with an asterisk, and so under the additional regulations, we would have the provisions that I provide on the right-hand side. Must be accessory to a residential use for the private kennel. And then the references to the, uh, provisions within the, uh, animal title. Now, I'm gonna stop right now and say, you know, and then see if the commission is on board with this approach. Okay?
I will fine with it.
Okay, now, I'll remind you that the, the parentheses with a two in it is to, a footnote back on page twenty-two that says requires operator or caretaker to reside full-time onsite. I think, so each one of these, you might consider as to whether or not that two is needed. I, um, reconsideration, I don't think with ranch dogs, you need to have a, uh, operator or caretaker to reside full-time onsite.
Well, in some cases, they don't reside onsite at all.
Yeah, but anyhow, so I would say, uh.
In RA, they probably should though, if it's a residential.
But if we allow the ag use without a residence, then.
But I thought in RA.
I don't know.
They can't have, I don't know, that's just our, or we don't allow the ag use without a residence already established.
Right.
So RA would be okay.
So.
Martha?
Can I offer some things for consideration, and I?
Yeah.
I would really recommend actually not doing all this. I think what you're doing is you're really intersecting in a way that it, you're replicating and kind of duplicating too much what's in your animal controls. So ranch dogs are not really kind of a use. So your animal control regulations have said, you know, you can have, um, less than four dogs, but it says, oh. But if you have a ranch, we will, as animal control, interested in the health and safety of animals, will allow you to have more than that, so you could have four or more if we know it's for a livestock operation. So that's not something the zoning ordinance needs to get involved with, cause the zoning ordinance says you can do whatever your Title Six animal says you can do. It's similar with animal foster care. So what your animal regulations are saying is you're limited a number of pets you may have. But we know that say sometimes I decide I want to volunteer for the shelter, and the shelter got an influx of, of kittens, feral kittens. And they, before they're able to be adopted, they need some kind of in-home special handling and care. And I decide to do that in my home, I'm gonna foster five kittens or, you know, some cats or some dogs to prepare them for adoption in a regular setting. So that is, so animal control has that opportunity to license that or permit that. That's not really a zoning thing. It's kind of like how alcohol beverage control has different licenses and permits for beer and wine versus liquor. But your zoning code looks at it as a bar. So these are really kind of getting into this level that is really just about the animal control department or officer, making sure there's not overcrowding of animals. And acknowledging that there's certain instances where more than the normal number of, normally acceptable number of animals is okay. And your zoning ordinance does not need to get into that and match permit type to that.
Well, I would point out a couple of things. One, private kennels and commercial kennels can only be permitted under the animal title.
And kennels are an exception, which is why we define kennel in there to coincide with, with Title Six. And if, if, if you would like, we can say kennels, including private and commercial. But we had purposely in the zoning code kept it as kennel because the definition in Title Six of a commercial kennel is somewhat problematic for the zoning code then to be able to match. So we, in order for consistency.
Excuse me a second, Martha. It's that they have to be properly zoned.
Right.
Under Title Seventeen, so I don't, I don't.
If we look at the zoning tables.
Just a second, please.
Do, we do have in the zoning tables, we do have kennel.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Private kennels and commercial kennels need to be properly zoned, and it seems to me we ought to at least have those categories in, in this. And if, and there, there are other animal-related entries that you have in these titles that don't coincide with the provisions in the animal title. Now, I, I'm, I'm fine if, if people don't think we need to have this detail. But we need at least to be consistent, and we need to at least specifically properly zone the things that have to be properly zoned before any permits can be issued.
Let me ask, um, does animal control, um, have, has animal control incorporated some of these provisions?
It's based on animal, right, Title Six.
So, animal control has been wanting to revise Title Six for its own separate purposes. And I think what I'm hearing Martha saying is that we're all in agreement that certain animal-related uses actually do need to fit into the zoning code. And to the extent they do, we don't want any conflicts. But to the extent an animal-related use does not need to be addressed by the zoning code, there's no need to mention any of those rules in Title Seventeen. I think that's what I'm hearing.
And I, I think that you're saying we don't need to get so far deep into the weeds.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think, partially because I don't think Title Six is the way that they want it.
And, and I, I.
And that's, that's why we have that provision about, uh, uh, any reference to a code is to a reference.
Right, I'm just saying.
Like ability section is only talking about residential zones. So we don't need to be looking at any other zones, because that's all handled in Title Six, according to this.
Well.
To statement here.
Well, we, we, we do have to take care of private kennels and commercial kennels. And it suggests that we ought to at least have our language consistent when we deal with uh, animal care and boarding services. We need to be consistent, I'm looking now on page eighteen. We need to be consistent, instead of just saying animal boarding, we do need to say commercial kennel, uh, and, uh, private kennel.
Wait, I understand, the way commercial kennel is, um, defined in Title Six is where, um, the primary purpose of the activity is for financial gain. And that would be even if someone has a, kind of a house, and they're making money off of, you know, kind of, uh, boarding dogs, or they're raising them for show. So that's what's problematic translating that into zoning, it's so broad.
And we don't, I have to say, there's no legal requirement that our definitions for purposes of zoning be identical to what they might need a separate permit for under Title Six.
Requirement, except I would think that we should.
Animal boarding is different than a commercial kennel.
Oh, yeah.
Commercial kennel.
One of my points in that you, and on page eighteen, you changed commercial kennel to animal boarding.
And commercial.
Right, and then we added kennel to cover both private and commercial defined through Title Six.
Then I would think.
Then it's only allowed as accessory to a residential use, and that doesn't make sense in every.
No, it doesn't.
We purposely bifurcated animal boarding and kennels, whether that kennel is commercial, if you're making money off of it or not. That's the difference between a commercial and a private if you're making money.
And that doesn't affect the land use, I think that's the point, that.
Yeah.
Kind of like special events, the impact on the land has nothing to do with whether money changes hands.
But our notes allow, it is, a kennel is permitted in GFTPA one APRA, must be accessory to a residential use. Is that the intention? So maybe here we're saying, well, any kind of kennel doesn't matter. And maybe when I get to the other zones, when I look, it won't have, it'll probably have a different designation. So it might be taken care of already.
Okay, so, um, I mean, I'm, I'm fine if, if, if the, the commission doesn't feel we need to get into this detail. What I was trying to do was, uh, provide that if something needed a permit, uh, and people were looking under zoning, they could also see whether that use was possible here. If that isn't needed, why then, the only thing I really believe the only thing that's really required is that we specifically provide zoning for private kennels and commercial kennels in order to make it certain that, uh, that the animal control officer can license those. Cause they can only be licensed if properly zoned.
But, okay, but why do we have to distinguish as part of zoning?
Cause we said that in our language.
But between private and commercial?
We, we don't, but.
Oh, okay.
We're saying that, so the kennels, like Martha suggested, has to be listed though.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Okay, so if you think.
So do we want to just put kennel, comma, private?
So do we want to just put kennel, comma, private and commercial?
That would be sufficient.
Well, and. I mean, I, I don't, I'm reading through the definition and I'm not really seeing. There to be a significant difference that we'd want to allow one in a zone and not the other.
Well, that's part of the problem is that they're listed under commercial uses where they're listed sometimes. They're not listed. So in a commercial zone. Under commercial uses, I don't see kennels listed at all unless I'm being.
Well, that, that's because we attach them to a residence.
Right.
So if, if we don't think that's appropriate, then I suppose we can.
That was my point.
Yeah.
Is it seems like a commercial kennel isn't always going to be attached to a residence, but it might still have a person who works. Twenty-four hours a day.
The land use might be different if it's outdoor versus indoor in terms of noise. I mean, there's also that.
The problem is, is that the definitions of commercial and private kennel are so similar.
Though, I still think it's okay to combine them.
That.
The, the way your code. So the way your zoning currently handles kennels. It is always associated with our residential use. So I know what you're thinking. This is again where it's problematic to Title VI. You think of commercial and you think that might be just a standalone kennel. That is not currently how you.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It's really boarding. Then that's why you separated them.
Exactly, and that's why we bifurcate it and define separately. There is a difference. There's animal boarding. Which is different than a kennel. In your situation. It's, it's specifically for your situation. Believe me, Gina and I went through this a number of times because I first approached it saying, oh kennel, that's boarding, that's commercial. But that's not actually how this works within. Your structure.
When I look in the commercial zones and commercial uses and I see animal care and boarding. I see that it is only associated with a veterinary practice. And so, but there are plenty of. Boarding kennels, trying to not use kennel word, but you know what I'm saying. That are not associated with a veterinary practice. And so it seems like.
And are those, are those standalone just kennels? No one lives there? They're just.
Usually they have training and boarding services.
Okay, and no one lives there? It's just.
Somebody may have, may not live there, but they would have staff there twenty-four hours a day.
Then if you want to have the tables reflect that, I would add animal boarding and identify the permit level.
Okay. Because that, that's really the only thing I see is jumping out at me and, and we should just check that in each case.
Okay, well, I, I'm. And I'm assuming that the other commissioners are following along.
Yes.
Okay.
Public com- public comment?
Sure.
Please.
If, I agree with the last thing that Martha said about. Identifying the animal boarding facility as a use and then identifying the permit level you want. I ran these by, your suggestions by Joyce Tekel, who has run a animal boarding facility for several years in person. And her recommendation. Was that boarding facilities should have some sort of use permit. Um, she also recommended that they be on larger sized parcels, twenty acres or larger. And she also was very adamant that um, they'd be inspected at least once a year. Um, now it's, it wasn't clear to me that. That, that, and so you have administrative use permit here for animal boarding. Uh, that might work, but the, the, the part that she was most concerned about was the annual inspection part.
Well, that, I think we'd have to leave to the animal control people.
Yeah, exactly. So that's a Title VI issue. So.
Why wouldn't it be a permit condition?
The inspections would be done by planning, would be done by the, the permit.
To validate the permit. Any inspections needed to validate a permit and then.
Comply with all laws.
Right.
Right.
So, but they wouldn't do it annually? They just let it happen once and then?
I don't know.
It's all on a complaint basis. So yeah, once the permit is validated, we don't do annual inspections.
I'm cool.
Planning doesn't, I mean, I don't know what animal services does, yeah.
Okay, I, here's my point, okay. I agree with the complaint based system.
Yeah.
When the issue is something that a neighbor would be upset about, like noise or. Odors or what have you, right? Neighbors will complain about that. But animals not being mistreated, if there's an animal welfare issue, animals whom I'll be able to call up. Or the planning department or, or uh, uh, the people in charge of.
That's still animal.
And again, if it's an animal welfare problem, that's animal services. So, I mean, we.
That can't be a permit condition?
I don't think that, that the, well, I mean, would want us to be speaking on behalf.
Yeah.
Of the animal control officers who are trained in what's humane and what isn't. They have their own title to address. Animal welfare. That's the area where if, if people would like to see changes, they should be talking to their.
And it sounds like there's gonna be that opportunity.
And if Title VI doesn't have, doesn't have something written into their code that requires them, or in fact allows them even. To do annual inspections, could we even roll that in as a condition?
And I don't, who's gonna do that?
I don't think I can tell animal control that you have to go do something on an annual basis.
If we didn't have a Title VI, I can see adding something along those lines. But given that we do, I suspect. Unless the board says differently, that they expect that to be um, environmental management's purview under Title VI.
I mean, I'm certainly not suggesting it's a bad idea, but I'm just saying, I, I mean, the planning department doesn't necessarily, it's not within our purview.
So animal boarding is not kennels, right?
Right.
Right, see, if it were a kennel, it would be inspected annually.
I have a question about that. I mean, that, that's, we're.
Because when you're six point eighteen.
And uh. We have, where commercial kennel was crashed out and animal boarding was put in, then below that is kennel. This is on page nineteen. That I assume we, we can say private or commercial kennel. And so animal boarding, if we don't define it, it's. Is that? Anything other than dogs and cats?
Yeah.
Well, it's not, okay, wait a second. Now I'm confused.
It is.
I, I thought it was, I thought we said, there's this thing called where we're, we're having animals boarded that are dogs and cats. But are for a, a longer period of time, not necessarily. Can, associated with a residential site.
Animal boarding is the commercial keeping, boarding, training, breeding, or maintaining generally overnight in excess of twenty-four hours. Dogs, cats, or other household pets and animals. Not owned by the owner or operator of the facility.
Right, so those aren't kennels. So those aren't.
That's, that's animal boarding.
Right, so that's not subject to the kennel requirements.
Right.
Kennels get the annual inspection. That's our point.
But the enforcement agency that deals with animal welfare. Is a completely separate entity. We, we are not the ones who would know how to come up with the animal welfare related conditions. It would be animal control.
Okay, so. I'm still trying to get my arms around this. I, I think I need a Venn diagram or something. When is a kennel, animal boarding? Under, and when is a kennel, a kennel?
Living there.
Right, they're owned by.
Temporary.
They're owned by you, the operator of the kennel.
Okay, so those animal boarding facilities are currently not regulated then. Because they're not regulated under Section VI and they're not regulated here.
When the animal control looks at what license, what inspections, what rules and regulations. That they have applied to an operation, they don't ask. Well, what does zoning consider it? Oh, zoning considered an animal boarding? We don't have animal boarding. They say, what are you doing? What is there? Here's what applies to you. Just like alcohol beverage control, they don't say, oh, you're a bar. We don't have rules for bars. They say, what are you serving? What's the operation? Here is the license under our set of rules and regulations that you are required to have. So they're gonna look at what the operation is and license and inspect it accordingly.
So what they're calling a commercial kennel, the director, uh, uh. Keeping dogs or cats where the primary purpose of such activities for financial gain. That would be dogs or cats in what you call a boarding facility would be included in that.
If the boarding, if the animal boarding facility meets their definition of a commercial kennel, then yes.
Then, yeah, that's the permit they're gonna have to get or the license.
Okay, okay.
There's also boarding of horses.
I, I've started, now I'm starting to agree with, with Commissioner Ladish. I think it's very dangerous, I think it's very dangerous to use very similar words to mean. Different things in the same code. Um, because, Jack, since you may say it's a different organization, but it's the same code. So anyway, I, I don't have a solution for you, but I'm, I'm now I'm leaning toward agreeing with Commissioner Ladish regarding the need for some. Some, some, uh. Either using different words to describe what we're, what different things are. We're using the. Yeah, being clear on this, because uh.
So we could call it a boarding kennel or boarding facility. And just leave it at that. If we wanted.
I guess my, my main concern is that somewhere in here, we use the words private and commercial kennels.
But we're, we don't care whether it's private or commercial. Because it, the activity is exactly the same thing.
We can, we can put it in the same category.
That's fine.
Right.
What Gina was suggesting. I just, that. We need to make sure that we have properly zoned uh, those two uses.
Right.
Right.
Right, so I think that's all we need to do is agree on where boarding can happen and where a kennel operation of any kind can happen.
And veterinary.
Yeah, veterinary's in there.
I know.
So, so I think if we want to go quickly back through. All the base zoning districts and look at what we have and make sure that we haven't left anything out. That might make sense. Or we can table this, I'll go home and look at it and let Gina and Martha look at it and say. Given this discussion, did we miss anything? Because I think it's very clear that boarding is not always associated with a residential activity.
Right.
That's the biggest thing that I see might be missing in here. And then would we, we would most likely allow it in M zones. And commercial zones.
You have the resource zones where animal boarding and, or kennels are permitted all the way across.
Yes.
I think we, we need to. I would. Think we would want to have a category of animal rescue or adoption services. So we take in the private. The humane society. That's more than just boarding.
Right, that's an animal shelter.
And it's on primarily public service.
Yeah.
And I think maybe I saw it in industrial. And that seems appropriate. I actually questioned it in this list, Tim's original list. Couple spots like was that.
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter?
Animal shelter, if, if we looked at the Title VI, and I don't think we're gonna have things that are inconsistent. Title VI, animal shelter is only for public facilities furnished by the board of supervisors. So I don't. By providing animal shelter, if you're saying, well, that would take care of a private thing like the humane society. Then we're in direct conflict with the animal title.
We have animal sanctuary listed as a use.
But that's a different thing. That's a pause.
So Gina and I can go back through and make summary refinements to these to make sure there. Is consistency or appropriate and also. Things aren't termed the same where it's not appropriate. Um, so we'll take another pass and make refinements. I will just office and say, just to manage expectations. The terms in the zoning code aren't gonna match exactly the terms there because.
No, but they shouldn't.
Just have some nuances.
That's fine, but they shouldn't conflict directly.
Right.
Like animal shelter.
Right. I think that makes sense.
That's, that's fine with me.
So you had some language here though that you wanted to.
Oh, well, that, that I don't think is necessary now and that. If, if we're putting in everything that needed to be permitted, but somebody might be claiming, well, wait a minute, I've got guard dogs working all night. And you don't have uncovered that. Now, we don't need to, I guess.
Okay. So. Let's turn.
It's easier to get this up when it was a month ago.
I read through every bit of it and Title VI last night in anticipation of.
Yeah.
Um, so page. Two thirty, is that what it is? Yeah, two thirty in use classifications. Do you guys feel that it would be the most?
Well, wait a minute, we, I thought we were gonna do animal keeping.
Definitely, we were waiting to tie it all together. Now that they're making modifications.
That's fine.
Yeah, it seems more efficient to me to go back, unless there's just something you want to give them a heads up about.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's just look quickly at it. Let's see, where is that?
I thought we were waiting for.
Well, just, there, there are, there are things generally that I'd like you to consider. While you're doing what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay, where, where is animal uses or animal keeping?
I let go of my spot. Page one thirty-three. And then, yes, yeah.
One thing was that the. Animal sanctuary, there are. Many people, I don't know how many, there are numerous people in the county who consider themselves running animal sanctuaries. And it is not a pause. We had two ladies, two women show up about their pot bellied pigs, animal sanctuary.
Well, yeah, and there's, they also refer to themselves as a rescue.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Let's see, well, where is the animal sanctuary provision? Somewhere, it's limited to sites a hundred acres or more in size. That. Let's see, seventeen point four, two point oh three zero. That's. That's back in.
I hate to add to the mix, but I didn't know if anybody wanted to deal with the rabbits and fowl and R one. I hate to add to the mix, but I didn't know if anybody wanted to deal with the rabbits and fowl and R one.
Okay, that was just the, the definition of, of animal sanctuary, the facility for care and or rehabilitation of animals, including large, exotic and other, and, and, and domestic, un- undomesticated animals. I think we, we need to take into account that everything isn't pause, and that maybe we have a, uh, animals per acre, uh,
We do.
provisions on animal sanctuary.
Well.
We're talking, in this section, we are only talking about residential zones.
Right, right.
Okay.
Basically, it's RR and R one.
Okay.
And R one's extremely limited, so we're really talking about RR.
So in the, in the body of our statute, we don't, or proposed ordinance, do we have any provision that is actually dealing with animal sanctuaries other than like, I mean, there's, it's in the table upfront.
No, the intention was to keep those large numbers of animals out of RR.
I understand that, but I don't
Animal sanctuaries
Go ahead.
The code doesn't have specific standards for animal sanctuaries. A conditional use permit is required, and you have to have at least a hundred acres, and they're limited to, uh, let's see, G, uh, general forestry, forestry and A one. And, uh, I think that is through the conditional use permit, you can look specifically at the operation and have requirements and conditions that much.
But I thought we were looking at RR and those people who would describe themselves as a rescue, like the person who has two horses that they're taking care of.
But there are people in, in non-residential areas that, that they're, uh, they're charitable organizations as animal sanctuaries.
But not this section, a section only
No, I understand.
To that.
I understand. The Okay. Anyhow, with the animal keeping, I, I, I think we ought to have some some things where the, and maybe uh, in, it doesn't really fit in animal production. People who consider themselves as having an animal sanctuary, that is nowhere near a hundred acres, but they're, they've, they've taken in llamas, they've taken in sheep.
Why would it matter why, why, why they're doing it? It's just about how many on the parcel.
Why stick a label on it?
This is about land use.
It's about the numbers of units per acre.
But it's not, okay, if we don't care, I mean, in animal production has, has the limits we were talking about earlier today.
But if it's on, right, but if it's on A land and somebody rescued three llamas, it's just not gonna be an issue. Right?
Right, this is the way to restrict numbers of animals in residential area, on residential parcels.
The effect of the pig is gonna be the same effect, whether it's a poor pig that was rescued from the street or whether it was bred for bacon.
Yeah.
Would it be considered animal production?
Sorry.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
The same effect.
Okay, okay, so it was, that would, on the A lands, it would come
Come in?
Just a sec, under animal production? Any, any restrictions?
Animal production?
Well, that, that
Yeah.
Doing acting.
Animal production, animal productions allowed in the other zones, not RR or R.
I know, I know, what I'm trying to say, okay, it's not a residential zone.
Right.
They're not raising these animals for economic gain, they're not producing animals. But, but that would still, they would fall under the animal production section?
They could.
I think, I think what, what Martha is trying to do, and I think the purpose of a zoning code is to look at land use impacts, not motivation necessarily. There might be other reasons to support, yeah.
The title was animal production. Uh, Martha, I
But we don't care, we've already determined that titles don't matter, it's really the content, right? So it, does it make sense to take a look at some alternative titles for that section, maybe? And maybe add something, but we're coming back to animal production anyway, so I don't think we wanna spend a lot of time right now.
That's fine, but when we come back, let's consider just changing the language a bit so that it's really animal keeping on land, on animal lands, yeah.
Right, so I'm
Okay.
So Tom, there was something you wanted to add?
Right, I think we're all in agreement that the professional, the Performing Animal Welfare Society, preserve is an animal sanctuary, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
And even if they are, they'd be a non-conforming use.
So, do we want that? It's, it's currently, it's zone, it's legis designation is industrial. I'm not sure where its zoning is zoned at. Do we wanna make it a non-conforming use, or do we wanna allow sanctuaries in mil, in industrial zones?
To be honest with you, I think it's quite unusual that we would find a parcel the size of PAWS that zoned industrial to begin with. If it wasn't for the cement plant, I'm sure that that zoning wouldn't exist.
But
So most of our industrial land that's left is probably a lot less in size, I don't
So it's a non-conforming use then?
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it couldn't be expanded, it, could it be expanded? Or could it be maintained? What are the limitations on the non-conforming?
Why, why are we worrying about this, right?
Yeah, I, I don't
Well, because we talked about animal sanctuaries. And I don't see it listed, animal sanctuaries aren't listed in industrial, and PAWS, which is clearly an animal, is, is the one big animal sanctuary in the county, is an industrial zone. So, that's why
The easiest thing would be to rezone that parcel to something that may
Well,
is for it, but
My understanding is the owner doesn't want it rezoned. They, they're allowed to use it
Well, then we're not gonna worry about it, we're gonna leave it as non-conforming and not concern ourselves with it, and if they ever want to do some sort of expansion that would require
I honestly don't know what expansion they could possibly, I mean, they, they're, they're pretty much built, I mean, they went, the permit, if I recall, included
On the agenda, this is
Yeah, uh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Well, I, we're, we're talking about zoning.
Yeah.
Well, now we're talking about an individual use and what their worries might be, and I don't quite understand how that fits into the zoning code.
I don't either, I think a more, um, maybe targeted thing is do we define animal rescue, which is a smaller scale version of that, when we get to definitions, so that we can capture those people who consider themselves a small sanctuary or a rescue, and, and assign them someplace.
I think that's a great idea, because then, then there'll be a place for them in the tables, and we can decide whether they need a permit or not.
Yeah, so are we all in agreement on that? We're gonna leave it with Gina and Martha for the moment?
Always in favor of leaving it with Gina and Martha.
Me too.
So, so can I go to page two thirty?
It sounds right.
And I wanna ask the opinion of my fellow commissioners here if they would prefer to start with definitions or to, to work on use classifications first, given we only have about an hour left.
We might as well use, work on use classifications if people have had a chance to look at those as we
A lot of it's gonna be pretty straightforward, so. And where it's not, we'll die in.
Okay. So, residential uses. I have lots of stuff underlined, but it was all related to other discussions that we were having about TPZ.
So, everything's clear what they, a dwelling unit that is designed for, simply used dwelling, the gas. Dwelling unit that is designed for occupancy in one household with private yards and all sides. That means detached. Don't worry, I just, that's, that may be the first line of this, but I don't know the pages. I didn't know if we were gonna say private yards and all sides in the parcel.
Where are you at? I
The very, very
Two thirty, very first
Oh, single unit dwelling, okay.
I don't know why we have private yards and all sides, it's, we have required setback.
Because it's detached and there are, you can have single family units that are attached, like a duplex or triplex, and so that's why they have separate descriptions.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Okay. It does, I mean, it's, no problem.
I'm so basic.
Basic is good, but then everybody understands you.
And commercial uses, even R are supposed to be an animal shelter in the public facility.
So, is this where we would put animal rescue, probably?
Yeah.
We don't have to define it right now, we just have to put a place to put it in.
Did you say you're all the way to commercial already?
Yeah.
Whoa. Yeah, I have, under the residential housing types, do we have any provision for mul, it says, single-family dwelling detached, do we have any situation where we have, we, we have any provision for housing that is many detached dwellings on a single parcel?
Multi-family, multi-unit.
That's multi-unit, okay, so it's two more attached or detached dwellings on a single lot? Okay. Duplexes, multiple detached residences, okay, great, okay, thank you.
You know, the statute definition of kennel for commercial uses, two thirty-four, two forty-five, you can say, include there includes private and commercial kennel.
Page thirty-one.
Oh, page two thirty-four, two thirty-five. Definition of kennel.
Oh, it's in red.
It's in red.
Yeah. Right, so all you would like to see is in parentheses, commercial, private or commercial?
Yeah, private or commercial kennel.
With the distinction being one is intended to make money.
Yeah, but you can breed in both.
Most, most people who breed are not making
Well, most people that are breeding are selling because you're not keeping all those puppies, so.
Exactly, but they're not necessarily making any money. Having done that myself.
This is as a director, found six.
Okay.
Is it still possible?
I mean, most of it seems very
I think under tasting room, page two thirty-six, at the bottom, operators offering tasting of food and beverage products that are available for purchase. So they they offer slices of cheese with their wine that's available for purchase, they usually also sell the cheese. Well, no, here it would say, the food and beverage products that are available for purchase.
That's what makes it a tasting room, it doesn't preclude you offering.
Otherwise, it would just be a bar.
Not, yeah, it's just that anything you serve the people, they have, they you have to also make it available for purchase, the way that we said.
No, 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 but you can sell it also.
Well, why would you not want to, if you're letting me taste? I, the way I read, food and beverage products that are available for purchase
So that makes it a tasting room, but because the, you, you are offering olive oil for sale, and that it's an olive oil tasting room, that doesn't mean the olive oil place can't also sell packaged food like crackers and
Do they, do they have to?
No, that's what I'm saying, they don't have to.
They don't have to.
The way I read that sentence, they would have to.
No, it can just be, in order for you to taste the olive oil, you have to have bread chunks available.
Right.
I understand.
So I don't
But they don't have to sell the bread.
Bread.
That
Is that what you're trying to say?
Fully agree with that.
Yeah.
It's just that I didn't think that's what this was saying. If you're offering, here, have some bread with your, with your olive oil. Seems to me this is this sentence means you have to be also selling the bread.
And, I mean, it doesn't say offering only the tasting of food and beverages that are available for purchase, I think
I actually agree with
The thing that is the tasting room is what the main thing you're tasting has to be available for purchase.
It does make, I, I can read that and think it means that you can't offer anything that isn't for sale. Like that, that, it's a limiting sentence.
Yeah, I can, I can see it that way, but I think that it, the common understanding would be, of course, that's not the case. But it also said, products offered for tasting and sale may include, um, so maybe yeah, how do we, how do we make it?
May be available for
That maybe, yeah.
Well, you want it, you wanna have
Yeah, the, the main thing has to be.
Right.
So, operations offering, so that, the first thing is fine, they are offering for sale the thing that they are hocking as their item to taste, right? Um, we could just add a sentence that said, uh, not sure what the word would be for those, but
And maybe, I mean, everybody knows with the tasting room, who's gonna make the difference? I will draw my I think this has got to get too complex.
Couldn't you just change it to
Yeah.
Beverage products may be available for purchasing.
Well
Well, you wanna
Means that they, they don't necessarily have to, but they could be.
But that's what it says.
But for a tasting room, I think you want to, uh,
Right.
Oh, you, you know, if it's a wine tasting room.
Right.
Right.
You don't wanna just go in and taste.
You don't want to spoon
If you're, if you're
Well, the original language that we had actually Well, the original language that we had actually was just said, offering food and beverage products for tasting as an accessory to retail sales.
Yeah, what, what was wrong with that, I wonder?
Are you saying you want to put it back?
I think the original language is better than this, yeah.
Okay, but I'm not, I don't know that it is any better.
Yeah, you know, you're right, I mean, it's, it's, it's. What we, we're all thinking of wine tasting. We want to require them to sell wine, their wine, that they're offering for tasting. And it's not just accessory to a retail sales facility, but it's accessory to retail sales facility for one of those products. A food or beverage product, how about just adding, keeping the original language, and it's accessory to a retail sales facility for one of, for one of those food or beverage products. For at least.
For at least one of those.
Getting the upper something, but it's saying that they're.
I was thinking that maybe you leave it how we have it now, but say, products offered for tasting. The, the examples are fine, but you could also say, products offered for tasting may include items that are not for sale. I just don't know if that word is left on an accessory product, it's a pairing product, it's a palate cleansing item, it could be any one of a number of things.
I just don't think anyone's gonna interpret that as everything that's there to taste has to be for sale.
I, I don't think so either.
It's, it's just.
But I think tasting as accessory to a retail, to retail sales of one of the products.
I guess I would say the common understanding of how we have it drafted with the revisions, the potential misinterpretation where you're saying, oh, people will think I can't serve crackers with my wine tasting, because I'm not selling the crackers, I think is. That's probably problematic, I think what would be more problematic is if they're selling all kinds of things and, or they're, yeah, I, I don't know, I think the problem that we're thinking of is not necessarily a realistic problem, based on common understanding of.
I volunteered to withdraw from this field about ten minutes ago, so if everybody.
Public comment?
Sure. No, we withdrew.
No, I'm going somewhere, I want to go back to outdoor entertainment.
Outdoor entertainment.
It's a two thirty-five, just to, just back one, one page. Predominantly spectator uses conducted in open or partially enclosed or screened facilities. Typical uses include amusement park, sports stadium and arenas, racetracks, amphitheaters, and drive-in theaters. And it's only allowed in the recreation district. I guess my question here is, so if you don't fit, if you, if you're not in a rec district, and you want to do something along these lines, you pretty much need to be an allowed temporary use or a temporary use permit, is that right? So, let me give you an example, we have people who have, you know, throw, throw up stages in the, in the summertime and have events. They throw up stages and have, you know, musical events or, or theater events outside, and they do it in all kinds of zones.
Outdoor entertainment is not just restricted to rec.
Well, I know, I, I know, I know what it, what it says here, I understand that. So, but currently, what people do in the real world, is what I'm talking about. So, they would need a temporary use permit to do something like an amph-, a, a theater or a musical thing in a, a, a general forest zone or in a residential zone or a commercial zone?
Yeah, a, a, a temporary amphitheater is a special event.
Well, it, it would be, it's a, it's a, so, it could be a seasonal thing, so they could get a special event for June, July, and August.
Sure.
Okay, so based, so all of those don't fit here, all those fit under temporary uses, and that's how they're gonna, that's how they happen, okay? Well, I just want to make sure that they're still allowed some, you know, where they're.
Yeah, so I mean, these are like, per-, these are permanent ongoing uses.
With significant infrastructure associated with them.
Okay, so it's, yeah, okay, I get it now, because, I get it now, thanks.
Again, page two thirty-seven, bed and breakfast in. Residential structure or a portion of such structure, a dwelling unit inhabited by a full-time permanent resident. With any meals available, but limited exclusively to guests at the end. What's the any?
If you could, you could.
Doesn't have to just be breakfasts or whatever, even though it says breakfast.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, because they often offer, like, snacks. Yeah.
Or maybe it's a special lunch.
Two thirty-eight?
Or brunch.
Page two thirty-eight, under office, and this was something, I think, Julia, that you figured, that we should have something at the end of that, that says, does not include office areas within places primarily devoted to other uses.
Oh, I don't remember that, but I like it.
Will you adopt it?
You want to take credit for that?
I'll take credit for it, sure, anything.
I mean, I think.
Okay, so.
Does that mean that, that would take in?
So, what was that again?
Okay, does not include office areas within places primarily devoted to other uses.
So, if you have.
Really?
It's just like the, the auto repair shop, that's a.
Like, there are no.
Right, so that distinction doesn't need to be made, we have an allowance for accessory uses that are typically, you know, associated with an operation, you're really looking at, because you would have that for everything, right? A coffee shop sells mugs, so you're really looking at that as the coffee shop, and then that, you know, these primarily, you know, everything has an office, right?
I probably didn't write it. I'm sure it was the thing.
Yeah, that was.
That couldn't have been made.
Distinction without a preference.
Hey, look at this, we're the sexually oriented business.
Well, no, we're rural home industries. So, let's look at rural home industries and.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have any comments on those.
I mean, that's, that's the definition there.
So, and I propose that the sexually oriented business section be one of the ones we come back to, because it has significant.
Right.
Legal subtleties that I think are still being looked at.
Shall we try to do that on next Wednesday?
Yes, I think we should try to do it next Wednesday.
We've got somewhere I have notes.
Telecommunication, yeah, adult entertainment.
We're gonna know everything about sexually oriented business. And, you know, there's, there's so much to consider here.
I think Julie has sent out some information previously, right?
I mean, I have attorney client memos I've brought out, and I think maybe some, maybe a minority of the commission and I can meet and talk a little bit before we come back, possibly with some revisions proposed.
Should we look at a smoking lounge? That seems to describe it.
I think so.
Vehicle sales and service. I think primarily we're looking to make sure we're not surprised by a description and think that we need to go back and look at the base zoning, that we've allowed it somewhere where we didn't understand what it was. But so far, it's all, it seems pretty reasonable.
Julia, if, if a minority of the division, of the commission are gonna talk with you by next Wednesday, is that something we need to formally?
No, we haven't been, but I, I think it would be useful to maybe meet, to talk about some of the legal.
Yeah, I did, I didn't know if we needed to say, yes, we will, on the minority.
We haven't been doing that thus far, and I'm not, I don't think we need to.
We have been formally assigning in most cases, not always saying.
Is there any objection to me working with Michelle and Tim on this? Okay.
Just happy to be left out.
I might have something on page two forty-five, I need to.
Trying to reread it.
I'll, I'll tell you what my note in the margin says, is that, I'm looking at storage, warehousing, and wholesaling. And, under personal storage, I, by that paragraph, I said, this paragraph does not seem to fit under the general paragraph above of storage, warehousing, and wholesaling. So now I'm gonna read that and see why I said that. Invite anybody to join in.
Can you say that again, can you read what it, what it was again?
With a personal storage paragraph, is it consistent, does it fit under the general paragraph for storage, warehousing, and wholesaling?
I believe so, because typically, it's, it's treated that way within a zoning code. Storage facilities.
Reading.
I think that last sentence, under the heading, kind of ties it all in, right? Storage, warehousing, and wholesaling, the last sentence ties personal storage in.
Yeah, I guess, in, in the very beginning, it's storage, warehousing, and wholesaling facilities that store and/or engage in reach of wholesale sales.
Right.
Okay.
Are we good?
Public comment back on two forty-four?
Sir?
Um, lumber mill is defined as a, or sawmill, a facility where logs are cut into timber.
Lumber.
Into lumber, so, um, a lot of these, a lot of people have these portable sawmills now. This, you mean like a commercial facility, not like a, as opposed to port, or a fixed facility, like a, not the portable sawmill.
Having equipment, this is having a facility.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so, somebody's home does not become a sawmill simply because they have a portable mill on.
No.
Right, it's just an answer, it's another.
One of those.
It could end up being a rural home business. It, it's hard to say yes, I, I think it depends on what they're doing, if they're, you know.
How many people are visiting them.
Right, I mean, if they've got a little retail, you know, if there's saw, crate, sawn logs and crate and lumber, and people are coming to buy it, then, yeah, that's probably a commercial business.
But we allow that, and we allow those sorts of businesses under the.
Rural home, rural home industry.
Okay, so some levels it'll be a rural home industry, and others it'll be a sawmill, depending on the, okay, got it.
It's still, I think, a sawmill, but we could, we could permit it under a rural home industry if it still meets the criteria, right?
Right.
Somebody who's cutting logs on their portable mill, to.
Build their own house?
To build their own house, or, or provide to neighbors or friends or whatever.
Right.
Would not be officially, I mean, I don't remember where we use the word lumber mill, sawmill, just in the, in the tables.
It's an allowed use in, in some of the research production zones. But it wouldn't be an allowed use in some of the other places unless it fit the definition of rural home industry.
All about the scale.
That's what we're basically saying.
Scale, and if you're selling it, then you're a business.
Right, gotcha.
Agricultural and natural resource use classification.
Michelle, what time are we, it's almost two o'clock.
Yeah, we have about half an hour still.
We're going to two thirty, okay.
I still love.
I know, for some reason, I had two o'clock on my brain, but, okay, yeah.
I just love the term, reverse vending machine, I.
Me too.
You, you walk up and, you, you put in a Coke and it gives you back a dollar twenty-five.
It's a new concept for us, right?
We know that might require us to look at it again after we're done with that section.
After we're done with that section, yeah, but forestry, um, just, I mean, invoking the spirit of Kelly Wood.
Exactly, that's why I was just gonna pull out.
Where you have the word services, red, it needs to be a semicolon, not a comma. See where we are, Kelly would be proud of us, yeah, by the way, I think.
But he had comments.
We need to, we need to schedule, we're gonna consider Kelly's comments, too.
Yes, I, I've had them pulled out.
But this gives me a chance to ask, why is the word services crossed out in red with a semicolon? And then services is put back as new with a comma?
And like your semicolon idea, apparently.
Someone suggested, need a comment to do a semicolon, maybe, and we're not suggesting.
Sometimes it's just the way track changes gets tricky, and it doesn't like you to reverse something you've done without making it, keeping it red.
Okay, okay, I mean, I've, I've seen this elsewhere, that, well, we cross that out, why do we add, okay. Done, and we have fencing, fencing, and water, dred, watershed in the next one. Okay. Look at that.
So I think now we're making a good time to address Kelly's comments, since they had a lot to do with these sections or the, so. I have, I mean, large vehicle and equipment sales, service, and rental are prohibited in the AP and RA zones, and allowed only within AUP and GF and A1, I suggest service should be permitted use on all resource zones. This, but this has to do with personally servicing. This, but this has to do with personally servicing their own equipment.
Excuse me a second. Uh, either can we have copies made of that, or can I go it up to my car and get Kelly's comments?
Uh, sure.
I'll, I'll.
I think I, I actually didn't bring my copy with me, so, let me make copy.
Okay, let's go on to definitions, and we'll hit this on, do you, Wednesday?
Oh, you have it?
I have it, do you, did you want to give me?
No, that's okay.
I mean, I can go to, I have it in my office.
It doesn't have it, so.
I'd like to consider them. Um, here's my.
Okay.
I understand.
I had read them. Definitions.
If there's any way I could get Kelly's comments so I could prepare for the meeting on Wednesday, that'd be great.
Was that, again?
Aren't they posted?
The, uh, any, any comments coming into the commission?
I don't know, but we'll have them posted if they're not already.
They're posted.
Thank you, Annette.
We're, we're up on the, with the agenda?
On the calendar, yes.
For yesterday's meeting, maybe?
It's on today's meeting.
Oh, today's meeting, okay. Okay, now on these, let's go through these, the definitions. I'd like to have another chance to read through them, and I've only considered definitions when I've come across the term. Uh, so I don't have, I don't have a bunch of notes.
So is there anything we can accomplish in the next thirty minutes?
The next thirty minutes.
Can't waste any time.
I know.
Did you, I don't, I mean, I don't, do you want to address where you want the different types of animal keeping, even before the definitions are perfected? You could do.
Well, we already talked about it to some extent.
Like where you wanted you.
Really only residential zones, so.
No, I'm talking, like, the, um, maybe it was not the animal keeping, maybe it was.
You're talking about animal production?
That product, that, or kennels, there was, it was, do you want it to be permitted in, in commercial?
We decided that was unnecessary since our section that we were.
Okay, I didn't know that you had decided where they're going.
The only one that.
Is residential.
Yeah, and I think the only change we decided was to, uh, animal boarding.
Okay.
They are just going through and making sure it's everywhere.
Right.
Well, there's the enforcement section that didn't make it in, I, I, some of the enforce.
We went through it.
But I found out last night.
Some of it was co.
That a chunk was missing.
Yeah.
Remember how I said, why would I enumerate a single finding?
In my rush to get back.
True.
In my rush to get back every time, that's also an error.
So I could, I mean, that should, it was just the rest of what I drafted for enforcement, if you want to look at that now, I can, I'll make a copy. Did you see the email, Gina? Okay.
We can take five minutes to look through it and then hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what are we doing about definitions?
We're gonna come back to it because not everyone has read them yet.
Oh, okay.
Was, I, I should ask, was that deliberately omitted or accidentally omitted?
Oh, it was absolutely intentional.
Well, I was gonna figure, we don't have to go over it if, if people don't want it, I just, I assume.
Really, Julie?
Omitted with gallows.
I knew it was your addition, so I just said forgive.
Not gonna let Ben look at that.
Who needs an attorney to write anything?
Oh, my gosh, the piles are so big.
Yeah. I thought you were almost done, and then it looks like we're almost done, except we have a lot of go-backs.
Yeah, right.
A lot of go-backs.
Would you like me to stop sharing Kelly's comment?
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, uh, on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was helpful.
It would have been helpful if we had done it. Okay, so where are we in enforcement that we're gonna?
So the things that we're going to return to are development in the T P zone.
Just a sec. This is next Wednesday.
Adult entertainment. We're going to look at temporary farm worker housing and how that could be included. Then animal keeping and animal production, but not necessarily next time, since I don't think they'll have anything back to us.
Right.
Um, special events, we are not going to be returning to because we're waiting for direction on that. So we, we've actually taken care of what we can take care of for that. Dark sky or lighting in here. Telecommunications. And definitions.
I'm already proud of what we're gonna accomplish next week.
I, me too.
I will be proud as well if we do. I'm going to be proud, right.
We are.
Just what are you guys gonna do with your time when we're done?
Move.
If we can get through all of these items on one long Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully the following week, we could see the entire thing with only missing pieces that we can't handle. And we'll be able to do a quick review of it, and that will be a week in which we have both a Wednesday and a Thursday, but we don't know what the Thursday agenda is, so at that point, it will be in our hands.
Actually.
So in order for you to take action, of course, we're gonna have to agendize um, this appropriately, so we won't be able to do a final review of the edits, and then come back the following day, so it's gonna take.
Well, I was thinking if we needed more than one day to, to review the final edits, we have, we would be able to take up the rest of Thursday, depending on when it happens.
I should have, right.
And then you would, we'd agendize whether we, what our recommendations.
So if all goes well, then we should have the final draft for your consideration back to you the end of April?
No, I'm thinking the middle of April.
Well, the second meeting in April.
Yes. That's what I mean.
Sorry for the formatting, I only had my draft copy on my hands, so.
That's okay.
But there's nothing, nothing particularly concerning in the March, so.
Okay, so two weeks, you'll be looking at seventeen point four zero, right?
And I think everything was the same until, I think we had, what page, I don't even know what page we're on, seventeen.
See, wait a minute, I'm it's just matching up, I'm looking at.
You know what, this is the.
This is the same thing we have, I think.
Well.
Hold on, did I, did I hand out the right?
Looking at section seventeen point four zero point oh two zero, and it's applicability under specific plan. The, the, the number doesn't seem to match.
I wonder if I have the wrong thing. Like I brought the wrong thing, I think I did.
Okay, well, that's.
Sorry.
Okay.
Maybe the only difference is, but your, well, what's in our binder is seventeen point four one.
Okay.
I thought I I thought I printed. Maybe I didn't print it, maybe I just broke it or I missed it.
What page is that on? Page two twenty-five is.
Yeah. It was in that section, which is dead.
Oh. Is that gonna move?
Enforcement is two twenty-five.
Well.
So it was oh seventy-oh where it just ended. And you know what, this is probably right.
That, yeah, that's the same thing that's here.
Oh. Okay, you know what, I have. You know what, there's, this is also.
If you're looking at those seven.
This is, no, wait, you're missing part of it, let me re, let me, I'm, this is.
Is there more coming? No, I, I have a little coffee burning, so anyway.
Oh.
Okay.
And I think the numbering is off, like it's seventeen forty, but it should be seventeen forty-one. And really, we only care about seventeen four one, oh seven oh onward.
Seven oh.
So I'm gonna try this again. Sorry, everybody. We're just looking intently, trying to figure out what's going on.
I was gonna say, I have what Julie sent me yesterday, which I could share.
Yeah.
Right.
That's helpful.
That's the one that, she's, she's going out to get those.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure if it's helpful if I share, or you need to look at hard copy.
Yeah, it, it's, it's hard to read on screen.
Yeah, kind of small.
Yeah.
Did everyone get the email from, uh, myvalleysprings.com?
Yeah, about telecommunications.
March twenty-sixth.
The, the one about telecommunications, yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, I had it in here, but now I buried it. Keep reordering my stuff and I can't find where I'm looking.
Your dark sky proposals, if you're given to give a strong recommendation, instead of. Not to be dramatic, but don't need more paper.
What happened?
Tearing up your first.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. It's what I, it's what I got from Gina.
Your finger needs to date, yeah.
And we could just start at seventeen seven, seventy-one. I probably just tore up more than I meant to. Okay. Oh, I asked, it's a staple, and I didn't?
Yes, but we have.
Oh, that's fine.
There, we'll just.
We can throw down, that's fine.
What you just gave me has seventeen point four oh, oh four oh.
Oh seven oh.
Well, no, but it doesn't start, we don't have the start of oh seven oh. Wouldn't make do with what you had, what we have already have in our binder. If oh seven oh starts the way.
So the copy that I have has it start with A saying, no discretionary permit shall be accepted for processing or issued under this title.
No.
Well, that's in our book.
Right.
Yeah, that, that, that's in our book, so if we have your, your second page, what you just gave us is one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Which is probably what.
That's what was missing, two, three, four, five, six, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and then the subsection B, and then a revocation, so there was more.
I see.
Right.
Okay. So, page two twenty-seven. Yeah. This language is what's.
Oh, it's different, though.
This is.
Okay.
Well, she doesn't.
Do you have the whole thing that I sent you?
This is what printed out, but the one is different than our. No, no, maybe not.
I only have two pages.
I'm kind of at a place where I feel like we should just bring it back, um, where the whole section backs and, as a, and just put it in.
Because your one that you started in here is different than the one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, well, look at that, it's two fifty.
Another day now.
We're trying not to. We're gonna be super efficient, you guys are gonna eat your Wheaties.
Good watch.
Have coffee.
What my list is, if we're doing on me?
Do I have to add that back to the, yes, of course. All right, everybody, thank you very much. We are going to adjourn, and the review of the zoning update is continued to next Wednesday, April third at nine and a half.
We'll adjourn, uh, do we have anything on the agenda for two weeks from today, other than this?
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking.
On the eleventh, we also have the meeting on the April third, and then the tenth and the eleventh, on the eleventh is a regular meeting, and it'll be the extension of time. And packets will be going out tomorrow.
Extension of time.
It's a map.
It's, oh, for a map?
For a map, okay.
Yeah.
It's a map.
Extension of time for now.
Okay.
It's an actual project.
Right, an actual project. But that will still leave us plenty of time that day, most likely.
Yeah.
Wrap this up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.